The School Committee Special Session of September 16, 2025 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Member Donovan.
Present.
Member Willett.
Here.
Member Keegan.
Present.
Member Shabilia, present. Member Maxwell.
Present.
And Member DeZoglio is absent, and the mayor is absent.
May I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda for September 16, 2025 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Member Shabilia, second by Member Willett. Any discussion? And a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here for public participation? No, all right. At this time, we will close the public participation portion of this meeting. If you cannot make the meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to marthasoroyes@methuen.k12.ma.us before 3:00 PM on the day of the school committee meeting. MASC policy review. Member Shabilia, the chairperson of the policy subcommittee, would you please start the discussion with reviewing the letter from MASC field director Alicia Mallon, and then continuing with each section?
I'll help you if you need.
You'll help me with that?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. So do you want me to read the letter?
I think it's, I think what's important, because this is just very new, right? And it has been, the subcommittee and I have been doing this for the past four months or so, five months. So the letter from Alicia Mallon, our field rep, just, I hope you all were able to read that to understand what we've been working on, how this should go. And so we just want to summarize that, understanding that, again, tonight might be a little, we just, you know, a little testing this out and trying to figure out motions and things like that. We'll do our best. But the whole point of tonight is you have a, I'll just do this. So you have a copy with changes, which was sort of a red, blue, and black copy, which was what we, the subcommittee, used when we met with Alicia to go through, like where did we not have a policy at all, where we had one from 1972, where we had one but it just wasn't updated yet. And so you can see the changes. So there's a lot in here that really just needed to be, one, accepted, because we never had one. So there were discussions on the subcommittee level about, like, it makes sense, because we don't have one, a policy of this nature. Some that were just like grammatical changes or title changes to fit Methuen Public Schools, or, you know, minor edits that didn't change the intent of the policy that we accepted. And then some had some major revisions, right? There were some conversations that we had that were really productive on the subcommittee about, you know, things that were very specific to Methuen, some things that were very new that we talked about, that we incorporated with maybe the MASC policy, but made it more detailed. So you'll see that in the red lines that she has in the changed copy. So you have two copies in front of you, the changed with the revisions, so you can see where the subcommittee landed with what we believe. And I say "we" because I'm not a voting member of this, but I was involved in all of these meetings. It was, it was great to be involved in all these meetings. There was a lot here, and there's a lot here to process. But to actually have updated systematic policy sections when we're done with this is going to be remarkable. So, and we continue to work. So the subcommittee, Member Maxwell, Member Shabilia, and Member Keegan and I meet with Alicia. I think with the exception of last week, we've been meeting almost every week now since August. We had sort of a few weeks' break there in July, but we're meeting every week via Zoom to go over these. Our hope is that by December, we have every section completed and voted in full with a whole new policy manual from the school committee. That's our goal. I think we're on target, right, to meet our goal? I think she thinks we're on target to meet our goal. So the way this is, the way she recommended is that we bring sections at a time to the whole committee when the subcommittee feels we have the clean copy and we're ready to go for voting and discussion. So that's what we have tonight. We have four sections, pretty meaty sections, to vote tonight as a first read and discuss, obviously. So there's going to be a discussion and a first-read vote, which we have on the script. The other nuanced part of this is that the motion will be very specific. It's the second-to-last paragraph on Alicia's memo, that we are voting these in form. That is the actual language we have to use, meaning that we're voting them by sections, but the whole thing is not take effect until all of the sections have been voted in and everything turns over on the same date, whatever date that is by the vote of the committee. We're all good? I hope I explained that well enough if there's anybody watching tonight. But, so again, we've never done this before. So, you know, this is just, I think, also a little historic, that we will have a full and updated policy manual hopefully by December. So it's been a long process, but a very good process. All right? Think, yeah. Oh, I don't know if you can, you have to go through the chair, I'm sorry. I don't think I can answer a question. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, is there, is there a first read and a second read for these?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think what we're going to do is, if I remember correctly, and we'll check with Alicia tomorrow when we meet, is we'll do a first read, and then when we bring another set for a first read, we'll do a second read for the first set. So we're not having special meetings for first read, second read, but we're adding the second read if we know that it's a second read and we don't have any changes or we agree with the amendments. We'll do the vote for a second read. That is our policy, to do a first read and second read of any new policies. And we'll do the same thing, it'll be a second read in form. So we'll have the first four sections done, and hopefully the next meeting we do like this will have the next sections that are in, ready to be actually presented to the whole committee. So I know we scheduled this one, but, you know, there, this is probably a good idea to do again for the next round of policies sections, because it is a lot. And to put this on a regular agenda, I wholeheartedly agree. Member Maxwell had brought that up, the subcommittee agreed. This probably makes more sense to not just put one section on a regular meeting, but to have a focused conversation about this, like this, and go forward.
Okay.
Yeah, are we good? Are you guys ready to dive in?
Question through the chair. In terms of open meeting law, when we're talking about the policies, we're going to be adopting entirely new policies. We're going to be expunging existing policies.
At the end.
That we're going to have at, you know, so when we go through the policies, should we be doing it one item at a time, even though we're going to approve the section, because of the fact that we're expunging existing policy? We're going to be adopting entirely new policy, and we're going to be modifying either substantially or in minor, you know, modification policy? So we should be doing a piecemeal, I would think?
So that wasn't what Alicia recommended. So Alicia recommended, we do it by, so, so this is where it might get a little, we have to decide which ones we're going to talk about, that we do by section. If, if there are one or two that we are going to pull out because we want to have a conversation, or we have to maybe think about, we pull those out. So we would actually vote the whole section with the exception of, she said we would add that language, that was something that we had asked her at the last meeting, and I confirmed with her in an email, like, are we sure we're doing this right? So that's what she had advised, that's what I guess other districts have done. Just, you're going to, we're going to vote it in its entirety, with the exception of the ones we want to pull out to have further discussion. But, but we shouldn't be holding up all the ones that we agreed to that have been posted for over a week now, very publicly. So we shouldn't have any issues there. So I just, that's what she recommended, if the subcommittee has any other thoughts.
Member Willett, I think the intent is... Yeah, so the intent was to do them, put them together in this packet, approve them to form, and then once we have the entire manual together, it's essentially repeal and replace. So it all comes down as one chunk, and it all goes up as one chunk.
I'm just concerned is that this is like an omnibus format. In, in the past, if we've, we've done it piecemeal, we analyzed each policy on its merits, and we did up or down votes. So in terms of open meeting concerns, are we in the right by taking it up by section?
Your MASC field rep told us to do it this way, so...
It's never been contested before, that we have had no concerns at all?
She explained it pretty clearly to us, that this is how, this is why you have the subcommittee, so that they can prepare it, discuss it, edit it, and bring it to the whole committee as, here's where we stand as a whole committee, to, the whole committee has to vote it. Am I, am I misrepresenting what Alicia?
That's the way I understood it.
Okay. Okay.
I thought we were going section by section.
I thought we were going section by section, and as a committee, we were, you know, making, I mean, there are a lot of policies in here that need review by the committee, and wording needs to be changed by the entire committee. So I just assumed we were going one by one. It's kind of disappointing that everybody's not here, but I think that this is huge. I think this is important. I think this shapes the direction of where the schools are going to go. And to, to approve it by section, I, I'm going to have to go no and hope we can discuss it again.
You're going to go one by one to discuss, but you're going to vote the whole section as a whole. I'm not saying there's not going to be, yeah.
So you'll still go one by one to discuss?
Yeah, we're going to go through it, because you, I mean, the sections are big, which is why we're here tonight, right? The sections are big, make sure, the subcommittee should be able to explain the conversation we had. Yes, we adopted, the whole point of a subcommittee is not for the whole committee of seven to have to have the same repeat discussion that we've had over, you know, 12 hours of meetings tonight, right? That's the whole point of having the subcommittee. So, so yeah, I don't think we're not going to talk about each one. That's why you're going to motion and then open for discussion.
That was, again, through the chair, that was my concern, is that we're going into like new territory. And I've always been a big proponent of open meeting law, of doing it by procedure. And again, like in the past, even if we had certain new business items, we would take the policy one by one. And again, we're either adopting an entirely new policy, or we're expunging an existing policy, or we're significantly modifying the policy, or just making minor edits to a policy. So that, I wanted to make sure we're on record, that we have no problems reviewing it, discussing it. But when we have a section, section A, section B, section C, section D, that based on open meeting law and based on feedback from our association, the process that we're going to undertake will not incur an open meeting law violation. Okay, that's all.
And again, I'll keep, I'll keep careful enough records. This is obviously being recorded, so when we do the minutes too, we can say like, first policy, A, A, B, right? And then what's the discussion? We just have to open that discussion, and we'll go through each one. There won't, you know, for some, there won't be any discussion, and for some, there might be other, you know, part.
So I think first, Member Keegan, I need to make a motion to approve to form section A, so we can have the discussion.
So moved.
Second.
My computer just went out.
All right, so I guess I'm leading this conversation. All right. So we'll start with file AA, for those playing along at home.
Did you just do a?
Motion.
And who motioned?
I did, and Member Willett seconded it, go. I seconded, I motioned. You can't motion, you're the chair.
So, who motioned?
Okay, well, for those playing along at home in the top right-hand corner, you're going to see file, and then there's a letter code. Those letter codes are designated by, designated by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to comply with their policy format and structure. So when we reference policies, that's what I'll be referring to. So we start with file AA, which is the school district legal status. Nothing on this changes except some updates. You'll see here, they changed system to district, and we added Methuen, because it actually didn't say Methuen in the document. Is there any question, comment, or feedback for AA?
Just a quick one. In it, it says every town shall maintain a sufficient number of schools. Is that, I mean, what is a sufficient number of schools?
I have enough schools to fit all my kids.
Okay, so it doesn't need to have a specific?
Okay, I've never heard of that. Like, we just, we can't have like, you know, double classes and double buses and probably, and things like that. So, yeah, I don't think I would have a definite, yeah?
So you'll also notice down below, father in the documents, there are legal references. There are cross-references to where it connects to different policies throughout the packet. There are some historical notes, and then there are sources, whether it's MASC or a Methuen-only policy. So that is AA. Then we go to AB, the people and their school district. Again, this is an update from MASC. We changed, they changed citizens to residents, and there were no material changes to this document. Member Maxwell.
I just want to make sure, I mean, I like this policy. I know that this isn't one of our current policies, and we're just adopting it. I do, I do like it, I just want to bring the attention to, I just want to bring the attention to it and kind of focus everything on, on this. You know, there are, there's a lot in here that says it'll be, residents will be urged to bring their aspirations and feelings about their public schools to the attention of this body. It believes that decision-making control over the students' learning should be in the hands of the local residents as much as possible. And I just want to make sure that if we are adopting this policy, we believe in this policy, and we're going to stick to it.
So I'm not sure how this works, like, is this an open conversation?
Yeah, it just...
Can I respond to that, or?
Yeah, I don't, I mean...
All right, so...
Regular school committee meeting, so, and it's discussion, right? So that's what I'm seeing happening now, and I'm just checking, I'm making some notes for my own minutes, so...
While I agree, I think these are things that we're already doing, and I think we need to remember that these are, these are blanket statements. And I think that not only this body, but a lot of bodies that I've noticed in my observation of other school committees since joining, is there's a, a focus on a smaller percentage to represent a larger percentage, and I don't want that to get lost in this. I agree, parents should be advocating, I mean, we should be voicing, people should be coming to us with their concerns. And I think as a body overall, we do support this. So, I mean, I have no problem with that. Anyone else?
I'm just going to mention that, what was the rationale for having residents instead of citizens?
Because they are the residents of Methuen, the same way we have a residency policy. We don't have a citizen policy.
Why the change, because we've always educated citizens in our schools.
So I will explain what I understand, but I'll defer to Dr. Quong to fill in any blanks. My understanding is, we have to educate the residents of Methuen. My, that's what, and going through all of this is what I've learned. I mean, as far as citizen versus non-citizen, if someone is living here in our community, in our zip code, it is our responsibility to educate them as a school district. That's my understanding. And that's throughout all of their policies, they did this.
So, and that's the federal law anyways, that we have to abide by?
Yeah.
All right, I just needed that explanation. Thank you.
So, moving on to AA, file AC. This was a, our nondiscrimination and harassment policy. MASC recommended removing this and replacing it. If you flip again to the new one, this is their suggested policy. Essentially, word for word, we changed and put Methuen in there. This is directly from MASC with all the legal references and cross-references for reference. Keep in mind that most of this does come from all of those legal references. Anybody? Member Maxwell.
A couple of things. So, one is just a grammatical thing, that "that" has to be capitalized. But two, where it says MPS for otherwise discriminated against individuals, the base of race, sex, color, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, disability, age, genetic information. I mean, where does sexual orientation and gender identity fit into this?
I'm pretty sure that's language lifted from the law.
That's covered under, you know, where it says race, color, sex. Why, why does, why does a, why does a preference need, I, I just don't understand?
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and we can check, that's absolutely a legal reference.
From Title IX?
From one of these, I don't know which one, I can check.
Yeah, okay, can we?
But that language is lifted from one of the laws.
I think it's not Title IX, but we still have a state law that has that language in place. So we have to abide by the state law. Regardless of how we personally feel on the situation, it's not in reference to Title IX, I know that. But there is a Supreme Court decision that does have protections. And also, there is a note based on January 2025. We're reverting back to the 2022 policy after the federal court ruling on Title IX. So we're updating the policies based on prior action of the school committee. So hopefully that, and I think that the Massachusetts Family Institute also makes reference that even an executive order, the current one from the President of the United States, would not be applied because we are still under state law. So that's the reference, I believe. We could have our legal counsel check that out, I think that's the case.
Pinned that one for next time, I'll try.
Yeah, I think that is the case, though.
I got a system now, I'm good over here.
All right. Any other comments on AC? ACR, nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. This is an MASC draft policy, replacing... This is an MASC draft policy, replacing, I believe, the policy that Methuen had on file. There are some blanks here, you'll notice, under resources that need to be filled in, name, position, address, and phone number. I assume Dr. Quong, these will be updated prior to posting?
I'll, I'll actually update it for the second read.
Okay.
Can I just say something? As far as name, position, I think we should put position, not name.
Correct. We would never put name of a person, it's always going to be position at this point, as the names will change. Yep, for sure, thank you.
Anything on ACR?
That was it.
ACA, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. This one, I believe, we did not have historically. I know there's no note on here for this particular one, as there was on other ones, but if memory serves.
Yeah, they recommend only, it's an MASC-only one, so it's, they recommended adoption, this isn't something that we would have to have our subcommittee policy agreed to have it.
So that, yeah, this is an MASC policy that we didn't have, that they recommend that the districts have.
Yep.
Feedback on ACA?
I would not, does not, the school committee in accordance with Title, and the educational programs and activities, I don't see how this, I don't see, I don't see the relev, I don't see why this would be a policy.
So, this is our policy for nondiscrimination on the basis of sex?
We already have a nondiscrimination that includes sex.
We do.
So why would we need a second one?
There are several places in this document, and as you know from other documents we've done even since this section of the, the packet was completed, that are simply duplicative in nature, and I think we raised that with Alicia, and she said that that was all by design. And I, you know, I'll defer to Member Keegan or Dr. Quong, I know you guys were both in the meetings.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I mean, definitely not my area of expertise on policies, but I'm not sure. Again, we didn't have one, they recommend this, this is a policy that MASC uses and recommends to districts.
Well, keep in mind that this policy also designates the school committee to have the district Title IX compliance officer, as well as other things. So this is, this is not just a simple, this line is already stated in the last paragraph issue.
Again, I don't know if we need to go through our legal counsel on it, but Title IX, I don't think a gender identity is part of Title IX. It might be in a Supreme Court case of workplace, but I would rather have that looked at, and then also, if we're referencing the state law, we should be probably referencing and not invoking Title IX. But, that's just my, I, but not in the Title IX. We get a clarification on that.
So we flagged that for reference two.
Yep, I got all three.
Then we have ACAB, which was our old harassment policy, which was wildly out of date? Is that the one? Oh, no, this one is just not out of date. Was covered, and then we get on to ACAB, the updated version, sexual harassment, which is the draft policy from MASC. You'll see that there, there are no changes to their template document, other than the insertion of Methuen. Any comment? Going once, going twice, all right, we will move on to?
Sorry, one question. The students and employees and each parent and guardian shall sign that they received and understand this policy?
Yeah, these go in the handbook, so that would be with a, so some of these, right, when, this is, we actually, I'm not sure we talked about that here, but this might be a good time to say, though, many of these do end up in the handbook, because they have to be presented that way to parents and students. So we would then revise the entire handbook, once we adopted all of these, to make sure everything was updated next winter, spring.
So wouldn't we need a Title IX coordinator or investigator for this policy, too?
Yeah, everything, if we, if we don't have the person named, then I'd have to have the position named in all of them, is it?
Do we have a position? Do we have a Title IX coordinator?
Yeah, the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services is a Title IX coordinator.
Okay.
Yep, and trained to be such.
Okay, moving on to ACE, nondiscrimination on the basis of disability. This is the MASC-only recommended adoption. To Member Maxwell's earlier point, some of this is redundant, as it does pull out and expand on the disability nondiscrimination that was in, I believe it was ACAB. ACAB, I think, was the, the citation for it, but it, it gets more specific as you go down. But there were, there were no changes to this one. Anything on ACE? All right. AC, is it ACGA?
Yep.
Has been, was recommended to remove?
Which we, we did, in the subcommittee, we did talk about, these are, we have them, and they are posted. So remove them from policy, they're procedures that we have to have posted. Right, they're procedures, yes, right.
Same thing with ACGB, which was the, another Title IX grievance policy, which in actuality is a procedure document. We were recommended to post.
Those are big, yeah.
Yeah, this is a, that's a big one. Then we get to file AD, which is educational philosophy. So the draft note on this one says it's an aspirational policy. The committee should review and ensure alignment with current district vision, mission, vision, and goals. So we do not currently have a philosophy. I know, to Member Donovan's credit, she has been pushing a philosophy emission statement since before day one. But this, this is direct from MASC, their, their own edits here, not our edits, updating their own policy. Is there any feedback?
Yeah.
Member Maxwell.
So there are a lot of changes on this one, that I think we could take back to the subcommittee and discuss further, and maybe bring it back to the whole committee, but I think that using, like, small ones, I feel like if this is our educational philosophy, we need to live up to it, one, and two, when name, we say things like, we believe the schooling of young people is a responsibility, I just think that we could change the words, young people, or youngsters, it says. I also think that this second paragraph could be worded a little bit different, instead of saying, we recognize the diversity, we embrace our diversity and celebrate all backgrounds. I think that it could just be worded differently. So if we could bring this back to the subcommittee and just kind of talk about the wording, I think that would be.
I think one of the things that I recall, so work with me, because the A was a while ago, was, this was one of the ones that, that even Alicia said, like, if you're doing some of this, she referenced you contacting her, like, you just pull this right out, and we're not, we'll adopt it by itself when we're done with it. So whatever exists, exists. This one might be one of those where the subcommittee might not do it, you guys might do it after your time with Alicia, like, there might be more to it than just us going through wordsmithing it. I do recall, there were a couple of those in our conversations over the past several months. I do remember now having a conversation about this one, because it was, we just don't have one, and the school committee hasn't kind of gotten together to. Your mic, your mic, Mary Beth.
I think anything that is identified as an aspirational policy needs to come from the, the body. So I would definitely think it's a good idea to put it, this is someone else's aspirations, I want to make sure it reflects the body's thoughts, and I look forward to working together to create our own.
So my only comment on that would be that I don't think this would go back to the subcommittee, I think it would be the committee as a whole.
Whole group.
I mean, it already went through us, no point in coming back to us, so leave it open at the table.
This is, this is one that, that when, when, if we get to the motion at the end about section A, right, there's things here, we can easily amend for second read, that I noted, right? That I'm going to refer to the references and note the changes in the names for our second read, to make sure we accomplish that. This one would be one that we would say a motion, but with the exception of AD, that's how she said to do those, to remove those from the approval. And we, you know, again, she said, she kind of indicated, we might have a little group of like, these individual ones, we would do individually at the end, that we just needed more time with as a whole group, or as a subcommittee later, so.
Yep.
This makes sense to have that be one of them.
So then we had policy AD, which was to serve as a placeholder and, for a mission statement that was removed. And then policy ADA, which listed out district goals. These were noted to belong in a strategic plan, and MASC recommended removal. Then we have ADC, which is smoking on school premises. MASC model policy was updated in 2022, which they recommend accepting. Our policy is from 2009. This was ADC, yes.
Just a quick note for you, just to take a look at, Dr. Quong.
Yeah.
ADC in our student handbook refers to lockers.
Okay. Hence, we need to do a full handbook review when we're done with this, to make sure everything is aligned. That's so interesting, okay.
Well, I also believe that part of this process includes them going through our handbook.
I don't know if MASC will, but this is, it's taking this and actually going back to our legal counsel and say, here's our new, our entire policy manual, and they have a, just like MASC has this as a service, our legal counsel has handbook review as a service.
I'll ask Alicia in our subcommittee meeting tomorrow, because I'm fairly certain that the.
You think she does a handbook, too?
I think it was part of the package. I mean, worse you can say is no.
That would be even better.
Yeah, I would like to get our money's worth, not that we haven't already.
I agree, and if it's not, we know that our legal counsel has that handbook review of all legal and making sure we're compliant with our policies, they have that service as well. We just have to give them enough lead time.
Right.
We can't do that in June, I have to give it to them by like, March, April, to be able to review.
All right.
Okay.
Any feedback on ADC, the tobacco products on school premises? Nope, okay. File ADDA, background checks. This is a grammatical update only. I'm just going to start with Member Willlette, because this is his area, but I guess not. Member Maxwell.
My only question is, how often, can we put in our policies how often we do queries? Because I know that we only do them now on hire, correct?
Yeah, so, so this one got away from me a little bit.
Okay.
I think, and us, because I might have to take this one and look. There, there was something that was new, that most districts are adopting, that it's every three years, and they're putting it into policy, so I don't know why that's actually not here, if this is updated from MASC, so this one, I might.
I think it is.
Is it in here every, every three years is what?
I know we discussed it.
Oh, yeah, so that's, yep.
Member Donovan, why, can you point me to the reference?
Then that's the, because all the, the, Colleen put this in front of me and said, not this, but the three years, and said, this is what all the other districts are adopting at this point, to do queries every three years. So long as it's in there, because that three year was the magic number that everybody's adopting.
Yeah, the employer shall continue to obtain periodically but not less than every three years from the Department of Criminal Justice Information Systems, all available criminal offender records.
So if we are going to change this, I would just suggest that we make it a concrete every so often.
Every three years, or, yeah.
Or every three years, just because it's like, okay, well, so-and-so's only been with us one year, it's going to get messy.
I'm okay with that, if you guys want me to, to make that change for the second read. Where was that again, though? Tell me.
Second paragraph.
Yeah, yep, I got it. Sure. For the fingerprints? I don't know, but it's been $55 since I've been superintendent.
So.
Would it be finger, it would be fingerprints, too? Not just query, sorry? Or is fingerprint?
So I do think, Member Donovan.
Oh, it does, sorry.
Yeah.
To your point, it makes sense to put a disclaimer down there, or price as adjusted due to inflation, or incre, because I mean. It'll happen, the minute we vote on this, they're going to up their price.
Because it hasn't changed in eight years, but you're right. Okay.
Okay, anything else on?
I want to make sure, because I'm in agreement about every three years, but I have always had deep concerns about query, sorry, because it's only state-based. If we have the language that we're utilizing, query, sorry, and also in conjunction, the FBI database, and we're doing it every three years, and as for all our employees and all our vendors, I think that would be a massive, major policy shift that I would be in agreement with.
That's the fingerprints.
That's right here.
That's the fingerprints, okay, because I know it has been a nebulous system, and then I think maybe the.
Whenever we say fingerprints, that's the national system, that's SAFIS, that's the national system we're talking about.
But what we had with the policy was, for the bus drivers, it was, you would do initially FBI, maybe query, sorry, but then when they did the three-year review, according to our policy, we were just doing query, sorry. So if they updated from the state, and now we're doing query, sorry, and the FBI database, and we're doing it every three years, then that covers everything.
I can, I can speak to the fact that, because I did the red lines on the bus contract, the comments on the bus contract for Peter the other day, which I know took me two days longer than I said it would, it was query, sorry, SAFIS.
Yeah.
SAFIS is.
Is the fingerprint, national fingerprint.
Is the federal government FBI database.
Yeah, which I automatically assume, and I've been in conversation with the superintendent. That would, would cover exactly a major platform I've been talking about for years on that. So I think that was a good catch by the committee, and the whole purpose of having the review already is paying dividends. Thank you.
Yes.
In one of the query requirements, it says, any subcontractor or laborer who performs.
Are you jumping ahead to?
No, it's the same policy.
ADDA?
Yep.
It's the same policy. Any subcontractor or laborer who performs work on school grounds, I don't know if we need to, I don't want to say take this out, because it's going to sound bad, but with the DPW workers, and like, we have all those people coming to the schools, they're not in direct contact with the kids, so would they be required to have a?
Yes.
They would.
If they're on-site while kids are on the prom, property, yes.
So anybody coming on has to be queried?
Yeah, volunteers.
Volunteers, I knew, I just didn't, like, if we had an HVAC guy come, or a roofing company come.
So, so if it's temporary, so let me explain how we do that. If they're doing the roofing project, I get a stack larger than this of queries to review, and say, pass, fail, on queries of who we're allowing to be on our property or not. Now, again, some of the summer projects are different, because there's not necessarily students around, right? But I still, that's part of our requirement, is that they are queried, yeah. So I would say if DPW is going to be a regular presence on our school property while students are around, then yes, I would say that they would have to get queried. If. Yeah, if you, if we have a vendor, let's say, come in, and they're only here for a day, then we ask that our staff escort them through the building and remain while they're checking out what are, in the, inside the boiler, right? We have Bruce with them, or we have a staff with them. So it's that long-term work that we're looking at, that I do, when we do projects, I do get. So it's that long-term work that we're looking at that I do, when we do projects, I do get quarries and have to approve them.
What about the youth center? Because it's not a school building.
Correct.
But it is a school building.
Yeah, so, so here's, here's where that line is drawn, right? We are, they're the tenant, so whatever regulations they need to follow as a youth center in a public building, they're going to have to follow.
Okay.
Which means any other tenants in that building, we will have to, the DPW will have to follow, and the adult center, and we will help that, but we're not going to dictate that, they're their own entity.
Yep, all right.
Right, and so I'm assuming that it's going to happen because they're going to be a registered youth entity with the state. So, you know, again, they'll have to, again, I'll have to maybe help execute that, but it'll be whatever regulations they'll have to follow to have those kids around, adults, if they're present during the same time.
Yes.
Just one more thing, it says that quarries shall be shared with the individual to whom it pertains. I'm not sure why I underlined that, but I will go back to the sentence before that, and it says, files may be retained for not more than three years, so every, I guess every three years when we redo it, we would just-
Shred it.
Pass out the old one.
Yeah. And court, people get copies of their quarry or fingerprints if they're denied, that's law.
I thought it was-
It's the fingerprints.
Share it with everyone.
It's actually, I take that back.
Everyone who did it.
Yep, no, I take that back, it's the fingerprint, it's the national, if it's denied, if they are denied employment or on property, they have a right to have the whole record that I have seen, and they can appeal that.
It says in this one, it says quarry shall be shared with the individual to whom it pertains.
Yeah, I don't-
Right, so it'd be just you.
Right, so, so, I mean, I've been quarried here and I've never gotten my-
You've never failed.
Yeah, it doesn't say that, so that's definitely different, because I don't know how we would keep up with that.
That, that's why I pointed it out, it seems like a lot.
But there's nothing, i- is it upon request?
Pursuant to law, is what it says.
Because when we, when we, okay, so let me just check on this, because there's two, there's like three things piles I get to review. There's, nothing came back, I check and sign, so there's nothing for me to review, right? So it just has the person's name, I just have to see where that ends up. Because again, it comes from the HR office, I sign it and review it, and then there's some I have to review and accept, and then there's some I review and deny.
I just don't, I'm afraid that if we accept this policy, then we're bound to give every individual their court.
I agree, I don't disagree, because I just have to check and make sure that the ones that I check, like, is that happening after I am checking them and sending them back to HR? I'll check.
And that, I mean, if that's the case, then that goes for PTO groups, that goes for these subcontractors.
Everybody.
That's a big deal.
There's a lot of quarries that run through HR in my office, yeah.
Yeah, that I think needs an extended opinion.
Maybe a little clarification, yeah.
It says pursuant to law and regulation, we don't know what the law and regulation is. It may provide the clarity that we need, okay.
What line was that? Just reference the line for me.
Last page of the policy, second paragraph. Nope, I lied, yes, second paragraph.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not seeing it, which paragraph?
Paragraph that says quarry is not subject to public records law.
Here we go, yep, I see it, thank you, I'm so sorry, I was looking from the bottom. Okay.
Okay, file ADDA-R, decisis, model quarry policy. Decisis is the Department of Criminal Justice Information Systems. So this was grammatical updates only. Comment, feedback. All right, I guess we'll move on to the next one.
Maybe we want to pull that one out to get the origin, just, just in case it contradicts what the-
Well, if it does contradict, we can always fix it on the second read.
Yep. I'll check it to make sure it aligns, in case we don't miss anything, I just want to mark which ones I have to like add or check.
Okay, ADDAE, which was-
It does say the subject shall be provided with a background, so.
Where is that?
This one is regarding adverse decision.
See, that, then that happened, so I'm okay with that.
Which is the current policy, I'm assuming, so.
Yeah.
Just to make sure it doesn't contradict the other.
Yeah, so, okay, so the other one is there really, either we have to change the language in the first one to adverse only? Yep, okay, so I'll check that, that's good, thank you.
All right, ADDA-E was procedurally out of date and MASC recommended removal, which is the previous policy we just looked at to replace it with. File ADF is the school district wellness program. This is the original version that gets scrapped, and then here is, on the next page, our proposed new document. This is from their template, and you can see towards the end, right above the last paragraph, there were two bullets that were added by us, which I think-
Make a little change.
Gave this a more palatable acceptance.
We're going to- You're the member. We're, we're going to make a little bit of a change, so Member Maxwell is going to add, I just, I didn't add one statement for clarity.
So one of them says, events involving, involving foods such as, but not limited to fundraises, PTO events. These two need to say in school hours. Because we're not going to restrict what the PTO events have at trunk or treat or, because their parents are with them. So just, just to manipulate this to say during school hours.
So I'll change that, and I apologize, because Alicia and I had a very good conversation on the, the day that we didn't have the regular subcommittee meeting and talked about our conversation, that these were the two items, so for the rest of the committee and the public. One of the things that was, I think, tripping us up a little bit about this is that we were calling our wellness program the wellness policy. So when Mr. Fraddy came, and there's a group of people, and they have to put all these things together, we've been saying that's our wellness policy. And oddly enough, there's some other places on Dusty's website that define it as that, but I clarified with both Alicia and our legal counsel that this is the policy, and our policy states that the wellness committee needs to create a program that aligns to this policy. Does that make better sense? Because we were getting all tripped up with like policies and who's doing it, and so the, the program that Mr. Fraddy presented is not null and void, right? It is making sure what he is working on as the committee, that the school committee expects to happen per this policy. All of these things and expectations are included, and it just might be more detailed than the policy, right? So that might have procedures, it might have, it might have other things in this program, and these were the two sort of top items that we talked about as a whole, but then we talked about in detail as a subcommittee, that we all landed on very productively, that we think needs to be in the policy, so carrying forward whatever the wellness program is, that we have an understanding of that recess is not just taken away without thought, careful thought, and administrative approval, and so we talked about what that could look like, and again, that could be more procedural in the program. But I have a really good understanding of where the subcommittee feels, and I think they do how I feel, right? It's not that it shouldn't ever be taken away, but there might be, there has to be a really good purpose and timeframe for it. And then the events part, again, we came to this understanding, because this is a place where we do get stuck, right? We have PTO fundraisers and a class or a grade level raises the most money. It would be nice to have some kind of, right, pizza party or something, we get it. So to compromise on the, we're not going to have cupcakes in classrooms every day, but maybe we have a pizza party, and maybe Bob Fraddy can help us with, with ordering a really fun pizza that the kids would never have in the cafeteria or something, right? And help the PTO order food and not have it be not such a big, I did explain that, it was probably a good while ago that when we did that, when we ever had like school incentives with food, we did go through the food service office, and it was fantastic, because people weren't getting pizza deliveries at whatever time, right? They did it ahead of time, the PTOs loved it because it was, they could order different things. And so, you know, we could kind of get back to that a little bit with those larger PTO fundraiser incentives, the PBIS, behavior incentives. But again, I apologize, when Alicia and I talked, I just didn't, I assumed we were talking about the school day part of it, but we didn't write it. So I'm in complete favor and understanding of that, I do not want to dictate what happens outside the school day, but there needs to be some procedure in order to how it happens during the school day.
So for that second one, the events involving food, I feel like it should say guidelines will be developed as well, because I feel like it needs, there needs to be some sort of clear understanding of when and what will be approved, as opposed to, you know, teacher A goes and says, hey, I want to have this, and it gets denied, and hey, I want to have this, somebody else has this, like there, I think there needs to be some clear guidelines of, of what is expected to be approved and what is not, right?
So, my feeling about that is that would be in the program, then I would also say that program is going to come before you.
Okay.
Because your policy dictates that this wellness committee exists, and that we have to have a program. I mean, Dusty's asking us for our program, if they want a policy and they want a program, they keep interchanging it as well, but they want that, right, from the food service department, to make sure we have encapsulated all of these pieces. So I think that's, for, for me, I think that's where the devil's in the details of like, we have a program, how is the recess thing going to happen? There might be a little more details to that than, than what's in here, but it's part of that program because you guys have dictated that in the policy.
Right, it's just that, for the recess one, it says guidelines will be developed, and for the food, it just says-
Oh, I see.
So like guidelines need to be developed for the food. Right, like, that's all, I'm just asking for consistency, that's it.
We can be consistent and put guidelines-
You could either take it out of the top one or put it in the bottom one, I don't care.
I mean, we can, we can make it really consistent and explicit, saying guidelines will be developed or further explored in the wellness program. For both of them, so like that's, you're going to see more details or procedurally, like that's the book I'd give, I, I wouldn't give this to principals, I'd give the program to the principals, because I know it's aligned to this and has more details.
Are we adopting all of the examples that are listed? So, for instance, it says in the education education, because the following list contains examples which will be used in your school district, may not be used in the student's policy. Each school district must have its own rule and do their own policy. And then it gives bullets of examples, are we just adopting all of the examples?
Are you talking about the one through five? No, where are you?
Well, no, each, each section has examples underneath it. So like physical education, particularly, you have training physical activity during the day, road physical education classes, daily recess periods, I feel like this is where the recess policy exists, and the integration of physical activity into the academic curriculum, and then the next one is students are given opportunities to visit, so it's just different examples, are we adopting all of them? Or are we going to look at this again and pull out which ones we need to adopt?
It's a good question, we kind of didn't go through those, and maybe this is one the subcommittee could look at again for this purpose? We didn't go through that, right, we were really focused on how to get the-
Visit it again, and then we just got the answer that we needed, and we touched on it real quick, but we didn't go through the-
Through these one by one? Yep, fair enough. I don't, I know you-
Member Donovan.
Second lunch.
Yep.
I don't know what the policy is. If the child wants a second lunch, which is a big deal, especially if they have to pay for it.
High school more, but, yep. Yep. What do you mean, they go get a second lunch, but they have to pay for it?
That would be in the program, that's operational.
Yeah. I thought this was going to be-
But I understand, because I don't know if it's consistency for schools and what kind of emotional issue.
That's a food service office, I mean, that's a, that's a-
Yep, I don't, I think, I'd like to hear it addressed by the headquarters or somewhere.
It's a fascinating conversation, because we have the, the funding from the millionaire's tax helping us with our school lunch program, okay? And we have like a certain amount that we do for equipment upgrades and everything like that. The second lunch, because everyone currently receives a free lunch regardless of income, but when you go to that second tier, should we invoke that free and reduced lunch price for people based on income? Because if you're telling those kids that they might not have enough at home, that they have to pay out of pocket, that becomes a, a big concern, and I've seen that with, with kids, that they, they look for additional food. So that was only for the committee itself.
I believe that with the free and reduced lunch was reimbursed by federal and state funding, now everybody gets the free lunch.
Right.
Right, so we don't have any extra money to fund a second lunch for anyone else, right? Because we don't get the reimbursement, and it's not in our school budget.
We'll find out, though, lots of questions.
You know, if kids are, the kids that have like come from upper middle-class, wealthier homes, they're pain and full. But if you have kids that still come from low-income homes, and they might, breakfast and lunch might be really the only meals they got, they might get very limited at home, regardless of the safety net. But if the other kids are, we could maybe do it discreetly, they're kind of subsidizing.
Right, because I, we'll have to check, we'll have to check with Bob Fraddy about-
Again, there might be some money still available to, to entertain that.
I don't know, I mean, let's check.
Because if you're, the other kids you're charging, you know, it's something to explore.
Okay, so, so I'm putting a note next to AFD, we're pulling that one out right now, right? Like, that one.
ADF.
ADF, sorry. Pulling out, okay, got it. Out of the pack.
So last but not least, in section A, we have AE, commitment to accomplishment. Yes, this is an aspirational MASC-only document, it is not required by law, but this policy is a place for the district to express their vision, and it is noted that the committee should discuss. Member Maxwell.
So I'd like to start with, if Member Donovan wanted to suggest that we go through this because it's aspirational, we could make it our own. I would definitely agree with that, however, this one says that the school committee accepts ultimate responsibility. I don't have access to a lot of the school operations, so I wouldn't want to accept ultimate responsibility for that. Clear statements of expectations, by when and by who? Is the school committee creating these expectations with the superintendent, or is the superintendent, or, you know, and if these expectations aren't met, what does that mean? The evaluation of operations and instructional staff, is that, again, with the school committee accepting ultimate responsibility, because I don't have access to the day-to-day, so how can I evaluate something? So I would, I would pull this one, because I would not be on board with that.
As I read this, is this about making sure we have that?
I think it's beyond that. I think it's aspirational, because it's basically saying like, everything that every policy has been created and every Massachusetts general law is being implemented with fidelity, like, it is- is being implemented with fidelity. Like it is, it's pretty.
Yeah. I, I think this one.
Again, optional. So you.
Needs to go to the side. I think, I do think it's a little overreaching. I think.
You don't. What are we doing? What are we doing? Hold on. What are we doing with AE? Are we pulling that out of the pack?
Being excluded.
But we're going to exclude that. So you're going to, you're going to not, we're not even, this isn't excluded for review. It's just excluded. Well, you're going to vote on the whole section with these.
We're going to vote on the section.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I have the right. This is going to be a good test.
So we are excluding which, I didn't keep note of what we were excluding. It's.
So the two, the two, the three that are coming out of the vote tonight for section A first read are AD, ADF, and AE.
All right. Okay.
Coming out completely. The other ones are, I'm checking some references, changing some things.
Those can stay in for an approval.
Those can stay in for a first read because I have to do, we have to do a second read. So I have to make sure those things are covered for a second read. We're checking some references for clarification. I made notes of all the things I have to do on the five or six that you guys want me to check before a second read.
Okay.
A D D A.
A D D A.
A D D A was just the query and.
Yeah. So I'm, so those are still good. I don't, I don't think we need to pull them out. I need to confirm and adjust. Which one? A C A. Yeah, I have references for clarification. The A C A one?
A C A was.
Legal, legal references need to be checked for clarification.
I was just.
A C A. I'm reviewing, I'll tell you. I'm reviewing AC. I'm reviewing AC dash R. And that's actually more of an update for the highlights that are in there. A C A I'm reviewing for references, legal references. A C A B, I need to make sure it's, the assistant superintendent of student services is referenced as Title IX. A D, we are pulling out completely to review. A D D A, I have checking those two, the two that go together, A D D A and A D D dash R for reference for the queries every three years and who gets the query, whether it's a non-approved query. I can't remember what we called it in the second one. So I have that written. And then ADF needs review. That's the wellness policy and AE is exclusion.
Okay. So.
Good job. I give myself an A for that. That was good.
So at this point, we need a motion to. Do we need a motion to amend the original motion to exclude AD, ADF, and AE?
Yes. Good call.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Wait. Hold on.
You can't vote there, Brenda.
No, I don't think. Amend to exclude. So we said, I'm so sorry. You're going to have to bear with me for one second. AE, AD, ADF.
And AE.
And AE.
And it was.
And I had a, who motioned?
Motioned by member Keegan, seconded by member Donovan.
Motion, second, yep.
I believe it was unanimous.
For everybody else? Okay. Perfect.
All right. And then we have clean documents which we just went through, which we don't need right now.
So now you have to.
I need a motion to accept.
The amended.
The amended motion.
For section A.
For section A in form. Motion by member Keegan, seconded by member Donovan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Sorry, one more. Who motioned and seconded?
Motioned by Keegan, seconded by Donovan. Unanimous.
To everybody else.
All right. So now.
That was a good practice run. We did pretty good. I'm pretty impressed by this group. First time.
I don't know why you're impressed. I think we're pretty fantastic. But, well, I'm excluding you now based on that sound. Hold on a second. We got, need a motion to approve section B in form.
Emote.
Okay. Discussion. Member Maxwell.
I'm only asking because I went through the, the binder that I got when I became a school committee member. And I know that BBBC in the binder is the school committee out of, out of state expense policy. BCB, BCBD, and BCBG don't exist. I don't know if, or, you know, and then there's a BF, but it's not in this packet. It's only in the binder of the old policies and BH. So if we adopt all of these, are those ones just, they're not in here for review? Are those ones just assumed dead?
Um, so no, I think.
Is a policy we just recently made and it's not in here, but because we're not approving it as a whole with it. Um, the, the, the one we made about the.
The meetings, right?
About the.
So let's.
Coming and teaching us stuff.
Let's ask Alicia tomorrow.
Okay.
Because there were some, she's like, oh, if there were some that happened after Dan, membership, Billia gave her everything, then she wouldn't have them. So I think we, we're going to need to go through and find the dates of those because that one was recent that we amended. That one that you had mentioned to me. Some of the other ones, I'm not sure.
When I gathered these, I, I mean, you got to remember, this was almost 18 months ago. So anything that was new in the last 18 months?
Yeah.
But these ones aren't new. BCB, BCBD, BCBG, BB isn't in there. BH, BF. And they're in our binder that we were given initially. So I, I just don't, I don't want to approve the whole section B and then leave out these ones that we may, we may just have missed by accident.
Yep.
So I, I agree.
Yep.
I think it's a first read.
We check.
You can check it for second read and that way we're sure. But it doesn't slow us down for this read. Okay.
And then member Maxwell, as we go through these, if there's, maybe, no, we'll do it a different way. Yeah. Yeah. I just want a list of the ones that you have that aren't that in the binder that weren't here. Okay.
Okay. File BA, school committee operational goals. This is an MASC only policy with recommended adoption. This is their template policy. As you will see, there were only, there are grammatical changes. The subcommittee did not modify this. Member Donovan.
I don't know of any.
That's what this is for.
Oh, I under, okay.
Us.
Right.
Just us. I mean, what, what do we do?
Right.
I think we should pull it out until we can discuss it further.
No, I think it's the same thing as the other one you pulled out. It's your, your, until you have sort of this succession of philosophy, goals, those all kind of have to align. So I, I don't, because they're school committee related. There's nothing, that's not nothing I can give you.
Anything else on BA? Okay. BBA, evaluation of school committee operational procedures. MASC only, recommended adoption. If we're going to hold on the operational goals, I would suggest that we hold on this one as well. All right. File BB, school committee legal status. This is MASC only. It's recommended adoption. This is unchanged language from their template. Discussion. All right. Moving on. File BBA was the school committee powers and duties. This is the outdated version, MASC recommended revision, which we have on the next page. So this is very much updated from ours, which was 2009. This is their template language. You will see that there is only their grammatical changes and the committee did not edit this. Discussion. All right.
We don't have one. The nurses. No.
That's what I mean. I know that in the, in the.
I think that's part of.
The laws, the governing laws. It mentions the superintendent, assistant associate, deputy superintendent, school business administrator and special education. But I myself haven't noticed physician, nurses or supervisors.
So physician you do approve. Yep. You do, you do.
We don't have supervisor.
I'll check on the school nurses because if that's a, I mean, I'd be happy to bring those to you guys. I just have, we've never done that. It's an interesting group to put with the others on the list. Yeah. I don't know.
So I have a question about the special ed administrator. I mean, we have one in every building. We don't appoint those. We appoint the assistant superintendent of student services, not anything below her. So I feel like we should take that out also because different people use, different districts, different people use different terms for their special ed positions.
Let me see if I can actually cha, I'm not sure the language can be changed because I think that's lifted from MGL, but let me ask, you know, that would be a Macaro question.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I meant, thought that meant Gina's position.
Right. But we literally have.
We have special ed administrators.
Titles of special administration administrator in every school.
School business administrator by title, right? Like, so it is, I don't know.
So I'm, I'm just concerned.
Unless they all fall under the assistant superintendents and then if there's additional of these, but you're right, we wouldn't.
Right. We wouldn't.
Appoint special ed administrators in every building.
Right. And so either that or we need to change the titles of our special ed administrators so that it doesn't conflict with this. So.
Hundred percent. One hundred percent.
Okay. File BBAA, which is school committee member authority. Our policy back from 2000, originally 2008, last updated in 2019. MASC has a new version. You will see that it is primarily unchanged. And if memory serves, this comes almost directly from.
We pretty, we like it.
One step short of being a direct quote from MGL. Discussion. All right. BBBA dash BBBB, school committee member qualification oath of office. This is an MASC only policy and they recommend adopting. This is, yeah, well. Discussion. Yes, member Maxwell.
I just wonder if our policy that we created would be, if we could merge it with this one as well, because this is school committee member qualifications oath of office and our additional training. I wonder if that could be added here as well.
That's one of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm just going to take a note of that. So this is one.
Just put our, like, instead of having BBF, have it be BBA, BBBB, and BBF so that they're all in one, because they're school committee member qualifications and we want that training program to be a part of our qualifications.
The one we said.
Where all of our. Uh huh.
Yeah. Cause we just updated that one.
Yeah. So I wonder if it could be merged and, and put just into this one as well.
You, you said that was what? BBF?
That one. The one we created was BBF. This is BBA slash BBBB.
Okay. Of cour, unless, you guys are the chair of this meeting, not me.
I don't think it's suggested. I think it's required by law.
It is. Yeah. I read it somewhere in here.
It is required though by. It's required that you take charting. Could add it.
I mean, it talks about the ethics law that we're supposed to do within 30 days.
Maybe this is just one.
This is all coming, this meeting's all coming back to me now.
Maybe this is just one that, because it does say MASC only recommend adoption. Maybe it's just one that we have to make methuins.
Well, charting the courses, not methune. It's Massachusetts.
No, no, I know. But I'm saying the policy in itself, maybe it just has to be like changed to what we want on top of what this is.
How about we look at these three together?
Mm-hmm.
Because again, Alicia with, you know, she didn't get to see the BBF that we had. She may have a recommendation on how to not have three separate that repeat or something of that nature.
Yep.
Okay.
And she'll be able to tie it in with the, the cross references too.
Right.
Okay. So that we agree stays for.
And I.
First read, but goes back for.
No.
Clarification?
No, I think, I think these we might need to, well, BBA, I think we pull because we want to show her BBF and say, can we combine these? Can we rewrite them? Cause so I'm not sure I'd pull BBA, put this in the mix tonight.
Right.
Hold on. There's a lot of, so.
Lot of Bs. I know.
BBBA slash BBBB we're pulling.
Yes.
Correct. Yes, correct. I'm sorry. So if I pull, if we pull that, this one, and then we talk to Alicia about BBF, because she hasn't seen it, how do we combine these two that you gave us and our new one to make one? And what do we call that? Cause if it's, if it is BBA slash BBBB slash BBF, that is a little crazy, but maybe she'll be able to combine it and give us one letter. Yeah. I say we pull it completely from tonight's vote.
Yeah.
Because we might completely change it. It's not just a quick reference or a statement added.
You have BA and BD.
Yeah.
I think there's more to that one before a second read than just a quick change.
Okay. Okay. So that is going.
Lots of Bs. Yeah. BBBC.
All right. BBBC. This is school committee member resignation. This is an MASC only policy.
But the red is from our charter.
Yes. So there is a.
Why do we need to have it as a policy if it's already in the charter?
Just recommending someplace to reference. You know, it's just someplace for people to reference instead of like figuring out what to do, but. Just recommending someplace to reference, you know, it's just someplace for people to reference instead of like figuring out what to do, but.
So, I mean, people also need to remember that there is a charter commission actively going through the charter, so this is all subject to change. Back to Member Keegan's comment about how this is bad and needs to be updated. I mean, this I would argue is operational, I think I said that at the time, but MASC did recommend having a policy on resignations.
I think it's necessary because it's very timely.
Yeah.
Absolutely is very timely. Because it's based on state law, you move out of the district, you vacate your office automatically, according to state law. We need to have that.
So we can agree that we want one, but maybe not this one.
Well.
Because if we reference the charter and the charter changes, then our policy has to change and we have to keep on top of that.
Unless we reference the charter saying, you know, the charter.
References link.
Pursuant to the Methuen City Charter.
Regarding vacant seats on the elected body or something like that? That could be an easier way, right, we just put a statement, is that what you guys want?
Yeah, so can we strike that paragraph and just reference to the, the city charter?
So it still gives people someplace to look of like, what do we do, oh, we have, we comply with the city charter, so, because you don't, you know, nobody, you don't know where to go. Okay, so I'll put a line in there of referencing the charter, we follow whatever that regulation is at that time. Make that sound way more legal, okay.
Okay, B B B E, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. This is something that was noted for us to discuss. I think that, and I don't know if we discussed it at the time because this was almost a year ago at this point, it feels like. But I'm fairly certain that our charter speaks to this as well.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we ask Alicia to combine this with the previous one and just make one reference to the charter. All right, B C A, Code of Ethics. This is a code change and grammatical updates only. So this is MASC's Code of Ethics. I'm fairly certain we didn't have one.
Correct.
We, we did, it says it was a code change, hold on, I have it.
Oh, I don't know if we.
The Code of Ethics was B H. In our policy binder, it's B H.
Got it.
That's why it says code change to B C A. I really did my homework, guys.
Okay, so then I don't remember this conversation from.
It wasn't, I wasn't there for this conversation.
Hold on, I have my notes, let's see.
I only know because I pulled the old binder.
All I wrote is updated, updated for grammatical Code of Ethics.
So is this.
I didn't have a reference to anything.
Updated from our Code of Ethics, because it says Massachusetts Association of School Committee Code of Ethics at the top, which makes me think it's their document.
Right.
That's what it says, I mean, yeah.
Vaguely what I remember.
Member Maxwell, is this one of the other ones that was not, we have a B H that's not referenced that match, okay, so that's, I just need to note that, so, so how did I reference that one? B H is a circle. Okay. Is it vastly different than the one you have printed?
I don't know, I can't, I don't wanna.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Oh, quoted B H in materials provided, okay.
Oh, there.
Oh, there it is, there it is, I see it.
All right. Okay, B D A, School Committee Organizational Meetings. Policies are very similar.
I don't see B H. I don't see B H at all, I'm just, I'm sorry to go backwards.
So B H isn't in here, B H is in our policy binder that you gave me when I became a school committee member.
But she, but there's a note saying that it's in this material, so.
In the material provided from.
Provided by me to her.
Oh.
I pulled B H.
Sorry, maybe that's, maybe I'm thinking the same way. Okay.
All right.
So she acknowledged it existed?
Yes.
And that this is replacing it?
Yes. Do you want to add something?
Uh, no, are we still on that one, are we going to B D A now?
We can do either or.
I'm done with that one.
Okay, B D A it is, School Committee Organizational Meetings.
This one contradicts another policy we have because this one says that this one references the vice chair. And another policy that we have references the chair of the committee, and I know that's very vague and I don't have any notes for some reason, but I know that this one here contradicts another policy that we have.
So.
We don't nominate the chair, the chair's automatically the mayor.
No, I understand, I know, but I'm, I, I know, I, this one contradicted another one we have.
All right, well, maybe we'll get to that one as, so we'll like, remember.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean, like, we can, we can relate it to B D A if.
Yep.
Because this is correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
This one we're looking at is exactly how it's done, the first.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's correct or it's incorrect, I'm just saying it contradicts something else.
This one is right, when we see it on the next one.
Yep.
We just have to make sure that there's a note for me to correct.
Okay.
Whatever you're referring to.
Okay, B D A was our old organizational meeting. Just removed, and then we have B D B, School Committee Officers, which is MASC only, recommended adoption with Methuen specifics as needed. Which you could see in red. Which was added.
Wait, which one are you on, Member Chevilia?
B D B, School Committee Officers.
I got it, thank you.
B D B.
Gosh. Is, this might be one of them. Yeah, because we had to tell her that the mayor was designated to the chair, which is why we had to add, I remember that conversation with Alicia. I wonder if that is one of the spots.
No. She is our clerk.
The hats we wear.
Speaking of hats, I'm surprised Ian didn't want to come just for fun tonight. There is not.
I mean, every other position is, yeah. He's detailed out.
I feel like I'm missing.
But it's also, you know, I do the minutes during executive session, I.
That's because the clerk's not there, right?
No, the clerk is still in executive session.
Oh. I said.
Martha, yeah.
I guess I actually need to know, am I, I'm the secretary to the committee. I think Martha is the clerk.
Is the clerk.
She's the one who posts and.
Right.
Yeah, so I do think we need, and we don't typically call her the clerk, right?
Right.
Maybe I should, the next, I mean.
We've got one more meeting with her.
Well, we might have more, let's see. Yes, so maybe just a little additional reference there, clarity?
Yeah, no, I support that, but I think it suffices for a first read, that's for sure.
I think that, can I just make a suggestion that we put, because we really do define that, there's secretary to the committee? And secretary of the committee. So, um, let's just make those two clear and add it to the duties, is that good? Okay.
Okay, File B D D, School Committee Superintendent Relationship, MASC only, recommend adoption. Discussion. Member Maxwell.
So I would just take, um, one suggestion, the committee will leave to the superintendent matters of decisions and administration that come within their scope and just take out the word all, but then also in the first one, it says, the superintendent may seek guidance from the committee with respective matters of operations whenever appropriate. Who decides when it's appropriate, what if it's appropriate and the superintendent doesn't seek guidance? I mean, I just think that this one's kind of, I don't know, I, I don't see the point in this one.
No, there is nothing cited on here for MGL.
Yeah.
Okay, I think it's.
I don't think this is, I don't think we need this one.
I feel like we need something because I feel like school committee members don't necessarily know what their role is and we have a lot of people who seem to want to be the superintendent, and I think we need a clear description of what the, what our role is in relation to the superintendent. So I think we do need something.
I mean, I, we have that in, in our roles back in, it's, it literally says what our duties is in a policy that we're considering adopting tonight in B B B A. So this one is I wasn't there for that one.
I just, I said new to us. Yeah, we, I don't think we had lengthy conversations.
I just think our duties are already listed out in B B B A A, so this one's kind of void. It, it says that it.
I don't know, I think it's.
It says that, I'm only saying she because you're the current superintendent, but it says whenever the superintendent may seek guidance from the committee with respective matters of operations whenever appropriate. But who decides when it's appropriate? Do we decide when it's appropriate, does she decide when it's appropriate, I mean, that's why I feel like this is confusing and it's overstepping, I mean, I feel like you would bring something to the committee if you thought that it needed more, you, do you know what I mean?
I don't remember.
So do we include this in the exclusion list?
Yes.
And we could always revisit in the future if Alicia wants to.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not, it's recommended, so we're not, we're not violating any. Yeah, the subcommittee, listen, we're meeting every week from now until December, so.
Shoot me a message later so I remember, but I will, I will ask her tomorrow. Okay, B D E, Subcommittee of the School Committee. This is Methuen's version, does not include the MASC.
You skipped one.
I did?
Nope, I'm sorry.
So this is the Methuen version and it does, it has procedural arguments that are not included in the MASC model policy and it is suggested that we should discuss. But this is the way we currently do things?
I don't. The Subcommittee's first meeting, we provided a list of its functions and duties bylaws. To be reflected in the minutes and to refer back to, I don't remember doing that.
No.
I've never done that on any subcommittee.
I think that's why it's there and highlighted, for discussion.
And the mayor actually appoints the Subcommittee Chairperson, which is not what we've been doing. So I think a lot of this is not something that we currently do, so if we're going to adopt it, then I think we need to really understand what we're signing up for.
So keep in mind, this is this is what's already currently active, I believe.
It's not though, because the mayor has never appointed.
No, no, I understand that we may not be doing it, this is what's there. That is what the draft note tells me. I don't disagree, the mayor is not.
Oh, our version's right here. It's on the back of it. I would suggest keeping ours. And, I mean, we don't even follow that one, so.
I think we can revise B D E to come back in a second read to be more compliant with what we actually do.
Okay. Are there specific things though to revise, like, that's broad, are there specific things you think that need?
I'm trying to think back to the meeting and it's hard because it was over a year ago. But this, the one in yellow, I feel like that was aspirational at best.
Also, we don't have any non-school committee members on any of our subcommittees.
Yeah, we do. You have me, you have me, and you have Ian, who stood on the Transportation Subcommittee.
Oh, okay, I, I, okay, I didn't realize that you guys would.
Count. I mean, I'm on the policy one, obviously, and the transportation, I'm on all of them, I think, at this point.
That's what I assumed, I just assumed you were.
Yeah, I think I, for, for language purposes, I can, I'm not a committee member. I'm not a voting member of the committee, nor is Ian or.
But, I mean, can we be bringing in outside people to subcommittees, because that's how this makes me, like, that's how I read it.
Transportation Subcommittee, we had the guy from the transportation company who was on.
No, but I think what she's asking is can we nominate parents from the community or members from the community to be part of a subcommittee?
Can we? We can, sure, why can't we?
I think that was the question.
Yeah, I think that's, like, that's how I read this, so I didn't know that we could even do that, so.
Well, how do you read that though, because I read it as all, all non-school committee members will be selected by the superintendent along with the subcommittee, so as long as the subcommittee as long as the subcommittee decides that, that it's appropriate for whatever the topic is? It says subcommittee, here, I mean.
Didn't you guys do this with, um, Holiday Sub, Subcommittee?
No, we were told that we couldn't have outside people in the Subcommittee.
We didn't have a Subcommittee.
What was that? We didn't make it a Subcommittee because we didn't, right, because we didn't have outside people involved, we didn't bring in outside people.
It was a task force?
Yeah, it was just. It wasn't a Subcommittee.
The original time? The original group was more, it was administrators, school council and some PTO. The second time it was you and Ryan.
Yep.
But was that a true Subcommittee, did you guys get, was that? It was just you guys were interested in talking with.
It was just, we, we actually mentioned it during the public meeting, that it was not gonna be a Subcommittee, it was just gonna be a subgroup where me, you, Ryan, and who else was there?
That's it, I think it was just the two of you.
It wasn't a Subcommittee though.
Okay.
But that's why I'm asking, because I, if, if that is I would just tread lightly with that. Because then we're gonna be getting parents, a community member. I would just tread lightly with that, because then we're going to be getting parents and community members on subcommittees and...
All right, well, subcom, subcommittees are still part of open meeting law, so we still have to do this, have a meeting, have an agenda, and public participation, they can come and speak, um, right?
In the policy, it says non-school committee members.
Right.
Maybe we need to clarify what non-school committee members means. Right.
I assumed the opposite.
But the ambiguity, ambiguity there is...
And why would all non-school committee members be selected by me?
Right.
Along with the school committee, like, just in agreement? I mean, I, I can see, it's just, it's interesting because there, there could be opportunities where this might matter, um, to invite people, but it's like guests into sub, like, I don't know if there would be opportunities to have people who would sit on our weekly meetings or, or monthly meetings, but there could be opportunities to, do we agree to invite, I don't know?
I think that would fall into...
Do you know what I mean, like?
I think that would fall into the next policy of advisory committees. Because this, this would kind of be like our task force.
Technically, it's the mayor's task force, not ours.
I'm just using that as an example.
No, I know.
It says to serve as task forces for special purposes.
Yeah.
The first thing it says that.
So I feel like that's...
So, let's... Does, does somebody want to take BDE and clean it up for a second read? Don't everybody volunteer at once?
Pull it out entirely?
I think we need to ask Alicia a few questions.
Yeah, I think this one, for me, I don't, this is not an easy revise for me.
Oh.
Like, I can go through these pretty easily, what we just said, and like, focus and revise and...
Not this one.
This one I don't feel like I can do without having the understanding of sort of...
BDE and BDF, because they're relatives.
This is a good...
Yeah.
What is the Subcommittee?
And purpose, and how is it created, and...
And responsibility, do people who elect us, if people, if we not vote on them, however, in, in, for, shape, decisions, policies, whatever.
Maybe that's where the advisory committee comes in. Maybe the advisory committee was, helps the stuff, I don't know, that's why I'm saying...
Okay, all right. Yeah, I don't think we're going to resolve this, this one tonight, so maybe, so BDE and BDF, are we considering that a, let's pull those completely out?
Yeah.
And see about some revisions.
All right. So then we are on to BDFA, school councils. This is MAS C only recommended adoption. Member Maxwell.
I have a lot of questions about the school council, like, recommendations only because I've been on the school council. And in each school, it's to advise, it says in this policy, it's to advise the principal in specific areas of school operation. The process is approved by the superintendent and school committee. Then you go down to the next section, it says, "The principal shall by law serve as the co-chair of the council. The second co-chair will be elected annually by the council members at its first meeting." "School councils shall meet at least once monthly during the year." Our school councils meet, um, every three months, if we're lucky. "School councils shall use consensus as primary method to resolve issues and formulate votes by majority may be taken at the discretion of the principal and Robert's rules of order."
I'm surprised we didn't have a conversation about this one.
That doesn't happen at the, all meetings, the school councils shall conform to the open meeting law. That doesn't happen. "The superintendent shall receive agendas and minutes of all school council meetings." That doesn't happen.
So this, this don't, this doesn't need to happen, this could be what we want to happen? When this is fully adopted in December?
But if we're going to adopt it, we need to understand that this is...
This changes everything?
This changes all, everything we're doing in school councils.
Arguably, wouldn't that be a good thing?
It would.
I mean, to me, the school council, I've been on the school council before, and it's really just an hour of your time where the principal gives you information, right? Like, there's really no big discussions, there's nothing. It is literally just, here's some information, I've checked the box of having a school council, quite honestly, you know? So this, this would change everything, and I, I don't know that... We're, exactly, I don't know that we want to do that.
I mean, this says that school councils go over the budget for each school, and, and...
It says... Definitely, I mean, on the school council, we were presented the, the budget and we went over it.
I would not, on my...
Okay.
So that's why, I think if we're going to adopt it, we really need to, really need to look at this. If we're going to adopt it. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think it would be great, but I think, you know, it's not a talent, and... I mean, it's going to be a lot if we do this, because everyone, they're all, they're all, they're all, they're all...
And then we're going to have more, so, yes. Hosting, like, who's going to be doing that for the principals?
They're going to be taking the minutes, they're going to be receiving the agendas, and then it's...
Like, that's a whole nother volume.
So maybe we should go back.
Like, what are we obligated to do under MAS C law?
We're obligated to do it, so we, we can, I can, I can, I can do something with this, I just don't know.
Massachusetts general law is required, yes?
It is. No, it's required to have them, but they're, they, it's much, this is much more than what is required by Massachusetts general law.
And so maybe if we were able to work out what the law says we must do, here, this, and find, find sweet spots.
Happy medium? Right, I mean, I can give it a...
I think it's going to be overload, because we barely have people to fill the boards in the city of Methuen.
I know. I mean, we can't even...
It's desperate for people...
They have a hard time getting people to join the school councils, staff and parents too.
But I mean, to thrust all that onto an individual or to that group?
He's supposed to be elected.
Yeah, right.
At the high school, it's elected for sure.
It is, I mean, it is, but looking at, you know, we got it, because you, so I think, okay.
I mean, do you, do you guys want to keep it and let me take a stab at it?
No, I think you have to keep it with the law.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be what your stab is, looking at the law?
Yeah, but I'm fine with just pulling it right now, because this is a lot, I'm just, right, I'm going to do it, but there's a lot, so, I'm, I'm fine with pulling, like, just, we just have to look, we just, I'm going to list all the ones we have to actually look at. We might have this random list in November of like, these ten policies, first read, second read, that are from A, B, C, you know what I mean? We just are going to have to go through this and see how this works.
So, we're going to have to make, um, school approval plans, which is added back to...
Right, school council.
...the previous policy, so I recommend...
Pulling that, okay.
What's that? We've, we've pulled the last, so we pulled one, two, three, four, five.
Uh, then we have EBG, which is the school authority, which, uh, ours is from, maybe there's a lot there.
Uh, question, does it matter that it says, "The school committee may use the services provided by the town council instead of the city council?" I was just curious if that matters, that's, that was my only question. Um, in addition, it is important that a school committee is... Okay. That was my only question, thank you.
Do you want me to change that to city? And do you want me to city solicitor, do you want me to be specific? Legal department, city, what do you want me to say?
I mean...
Is city council fine?
Council is fine.
No, I'm just going to leave it, I'm just going to change town to city and leave it, because the key word there is may.
Okay, uh, EBG, this is something we recently adopted with changes, with changes in the...
Is this the one, Member Maxwell, you're referring to? That was not in here? This is the one I thought that you referred to? Okay.
Uh, on this one, it says, twice in number two, open meetings will be at six o'clock.
Yes, it does.
Um, my other question is about the, uh, YouTube channel, I, I'm only, uh, just because, what if you don't have a YouTube channel? I'm always saying if, like, if you're away with the program, I, like, I don't know, I'm not sure, but what if you don't have a YouTube channel, and then they're following our policy?
No, then we change it, yeah, then we would have to change it. I wouldn't recommend changing it or putting language in at this point, because we have it and it's been in existence since COVID, so we have a pretty good record with the YouTube channel, at this point.
Uh, can we put, it says here on, um, in the last part, the, the last...
Eric?
Yeah, it says, "Community members," are we put, can we put residents may participate?
So I don't think you can restrict it to just residents.
Why not? Oh.
I would say so.
Okay.
Additionally, like, a teacher may not be a resident, so, and they have a vested interest in what we're doing.
Gotcha.
My one question is the supplemental bill that allows us to be seen and whatnot.
Yep.
Is that permanently extended, or is that sunsetting at some point?
No, I think that still has a sunset in 26 at some point. I'll, I'll have to check that, but I don't...
I know there was a conversation about it being...
I think it was just expended another year, but I don't, I, let me check.
Anything else, or...
Yeah, do we, can we just take out the part about if it goes beyond nine o'clock, we have to vote? It just seems like it interrupts our meetings, like, it has to end by 10. Like, I don't see why we have to vote at nine.
Right.
Can we just get rid of it?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, uh, that is the old BE, then we get into BE dash R, which is meeting procedures, which was recommended for removal, as it was moved to BDB. And then we get to BEB, which is our joint meeting with the city council. This is Methuen only. Discussion.
I think that the, I think that we should keep this, um, I think that it should be a part of the charter, but since it's not, I think we should keep it, because what if, we only established a finance committee a few months ago? So I think we should keep it just to, just to err on the side of caution. Until it's either city ordinance or we have a well-established finance subcommittee.
Yeah, so my, my pushback, and I think I may have said this at the time, is this is so vague. For example, the joint session you folks had while I was on vacation with the city council prior to the budget, I remember watching that from the line at the restaurant, wanting to throw my phone into the mashed potatoes, because it was ridiculous. It was absolutely no point, it was pomp and circumstance, and I wanted to add something to this, but we can't dictate what the council does. So, I don't know how we add language here to, to make it a meaningful meeting versus a check the box, thanks for coming, meeting, where we all sit at the kids' table or on the council table.
I think that with some of our conversation with Alicia is that we can say this, but the council doesn't have a, a parallel ordinance or whatever. So they could say no, that they don't want to meet, now, they haven't, but like, we're, we're saying we're going to do this, but we can't control that side, and I think that's why the conversation was like, maybe we should consider, we control the finance subcommittee and what we want to do, and try to make that bridge between our finance subcommittee and the city finance subcommittee, which is what we talked about publicly here. That was the impetus for that conversation with Alicia of the, the point behind this, to, to educate everybody, right, was eight years ago, there was a demand for us to go, and us, I really say, Mr. Goslin and I, to go in front of the city council to assure the city council that we were remaining in the black. So it was, the sole intent of this when it was created was to make sure that a deficit was never going to happen again. That's not captured here at all. Now, I lived it, so I know that was the intent of it at the time, uh, and that is what we have sort of lived by, as we're invited to do these meetings, that we give updates on budget and finance, and make sure that we inform the city council that we're in the black and you guys are, right, making sure that we're complying with budget and everything else. But that's not here, and it's become other things. So I don't, I don't know the answer, because it's hard. We want to do this, I think, the school committee, and certainly myself, anybody in the future, I think, would want to do this, to create that relationship, but you can't, this body only controls this body. It's just a weird, and again, they've never said no, but it has been contentious at times about when we're going to schedule it, what's the agenda, who creates the agenda? What might be a mutual concern for the school committee is not the same mutual concern for the city council. There just could be a, who creates that agenda, right? So, it's just, it's neb, it is nebulous, but it, I don't know, I don't have a, I don't have a good answer for you guys.
And what I conveyed informally to some of the city councillors is that you're scheduling it one hour before the city council meetings. So if we're talking up issues of substance within one hour, be it the audit, or on the flip side, discussing nothing and we're banging our heads, and what was the purpose of the meeting, we should really go through concrete issues. I think the finance committee should be the focal point, because we're always thinking of finances. But to ha, and I said to them, to give us only an hour to talk about chapter 70, the millionaire's tax, um, everything, our budget, because they have so many things that they were completely erroneous about, that we provided information to, it should be an informational meeting, but to condense it in one hour, right before their meeting? It was foolish. And then you're rushing into the city council meeting, right? I think was, uh, doing a disservice to everybody. So that's what I recommended, and I will not participate in another joint meeting, you know, if I'm elected, that will only encapsulates one hour before the city council meeting. I think it's a disservice.
And I think the other point was, when this was created, is that, that, the, the, the only thing the city council has any purview over the school department or this elected body is the finance, right? There's a finance piece that connects the two bodies. That should be the focus of any concern, information, what we're doing, budget sharing, right? So it's also making sure that each elected body, you have a purview, they have a purview. What is it that we need to make sure they understand? What you're doing, what our administration's doing, um, that gets blurred as well.
So maybe if we're not violating the quorum, is that you have the finance, uh, subcommittee, and, uh, Member Donovan conceived that, and they have their, uh, subcommittee.
Yeah.
And we have, uh, financial leadership, yourself and, and Ian, and they have, you know, Maggie and maybe the, the mayor and the city council chair?
Yep.
Having that type of forum, and have it on a separate night, as a special meeting. I think that would be something concrete.
Me too.
Um, because if they go into other things about the operations of our school system, that's not their jurisdiction. They can make recommendations, they can scream at the walls, that's not their jurisdiction. If they encroach upon us, I'm going to slap their hands, and I've done it in the past. And I think this tug of war about, uh, competing councils, I think, does not serve the city of Methuen. So I think the foundation, and I think you highlighted it from eight years ago, was based strictly on the tightness of the finances. Are we in the black? Can you produce the information, right? And you have that type of forum, I think the voters in Methuen would be very interested in that, and it would be a separate night and a special meeting, and I think that would be very productive. So that would be my recommendation.
Maybe that's not a discussion.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I agree. I think it, the matter tonight is do we keep it or, or pull it out as is? Or do, and let the finance committee have a shot at this? Or do we keep this as is and just move forward?
I would say get rid of it because honestly, like, one, one hour for 16 people to have a time to talk, everybody gets four minutes at most. Like, it's, it's a waste of our time, it's a waste of their time and we're doing it to, to follow a policy that makes no sense.
Just to keep us on track, I, I think we don't have a choice but to kind of keep the policy. We can get rid of it, but I mean, we, this, they've got a similar policy, so. I mean, we, yes, yes, we can get rid of it, but whether we modify it or not.
Do they though?
I'm fairly certain they do.
I think we need to check that because I'm not sure if they do.
No, it should be.
We need to check. If there's a parallel, I am not under the impression that they have a parallel ordinance.
The mayor would know.
Yeah, so, so maybe that's just something, maybe we just, we can vote it through first read and not worry about it.
Hold it for second read.
But we can just, yeah, hold it and if we have to pull it out.
Ian is our representative on the charter committee and we, we as a body, I don't believe have made any recommendations to him of things we would like to see in that document.
I made one and he said he's taking care of it.
I just worry about removing this policy and then not having, I know we have a finance committee, a subcommittee now, but I just, I think that it would be smart to keep it.
I, I think it's just very like nebulous.
Yeah.
It's like, hey, we'll have a meeting and, you know, we'll pan us. We just have to request it.
But I mean, it's like, we'll have a meeting and then what are we going to be discussing? And then by the way, we have a meeting at seven o'clock. You guys have to rush your comments. That's not productive at all. I think the foundation is always about the finances and to allay the concerns of the city council, because I know there was certain city councillors, for example, that were critical of, oh, you guys have a bunch of administrators over in, in the school system. So to dispel that rumor, no, we provide the information. Or the governor's consensus number comes out, eh, very early on in the budget process. I think that would be very productive to say, okay, we're going to be in for, for a tight, uh, situation. It's going to be worse than last year. We have to mobilize our forces. And then that would break down the silo between the city council and the school committee and it should be strictly based on, on finances.
I don't.
We're not going to be talking about, uh, co-mingling, uh, legal services. I don't think in terms of consolidation, that wouldn't be an agenda item, right? And then if they encroach upon the school committee, again, I'm, I'm very territorial on that as a former city council and a current school committee member and we've gone to battle on the legal front. I think the finances is something that people will tune in, that we will explain the process, right, as best we can with chapter 70 and the millionaire's tax and the consensus number and what the governor's plan is and what we foresee. Um, I think that would be very productive.
So I, I would just like to just end it on my end with just saying that I hope we can keep this because it does say to discuss mutual concerns and I know that there are some issues with the city council right now, but I really would like to have a working relationship with the city council. Aside from finance, uh, so I think that having a twice a year meeting to discuss mutual concerns aside from finance, I think that that's, I think it's great. I think that we should have a working relationship with the city council. So that's my only purpose in wanting to keep it.
But the, the problem I have is we, we're very careful, we personnel, we have to go into executive session.
Sure.
Public safety, we have to go into executive session. So I would need to be told what is beyond the purview of finance? What are we going to discuss? Because I will not go to a second meeting where the budget is completed.
Buildings.
Right, and then we're twiddling our thumbs at a meeting. It has to be a concrete issue beyond, um, it could be, we're talking about. So keep in mind, member, that that could, that would be on, as, as part of our request. And just because we request a meeting with the city council doesn't mean they accept. And if they do accept and it's conditional, it doesn't mean we have to then accept their conditions.
No, I totally understand, but I don't want to go this whole tit for tat and we don't have any issue or any agenda, because that reverts back to what you were saying.
Yeah, the circus.
I think the audit was fantastic, but it was only condensed into one hour, rapid gun. That was wrong, okay? The, the budget and finances, I think, should take paramount, uh, concern. And if there's a backup thing that we discuss, again, it's an optional for a second meeting at our request and they have to accept it and there's a whole logistical, uh, series on that. I want to find out what that other issue would be.
Condensed the audit meeting? I haven't seen that.
No, no, we had, remember it was in one hour before we went to city council meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And you had everybody at the city council, everybody at the school committee, including the mayor, give very limited remarks on the audit. And then we had to rush into the city council meeting.
So what are we doing right now? So I think we're.
I think we, we leave it for a second read and.
Agreed. I have it as move forward and we'll check if there's city council as an ordinance. We'll have this as a discussion in second read.
Section BEC, it's hard to read the Cs and the Gs with the strikers, uh, executive session. Uh, this was our policy that is suggested for removal. Uh, and then there is the new MASC policy, uh, immediately following. Now, keep in mind, this is, as we were told, uh, very heavily from MGL because the, it contains the, the 10 elements in which we can go into executive session for. So, discussion. Nothing? I like it. Uh, file BEDA, notification of school committee meetings. So the Methuen version has procedural details that are not included in the MASC model version. Committee should discuss. So comparing this to our model version, which is on the next page. Go ahead, member Maxwell.
One note was the grammatical otherwise, but accessibility, what are we doing to, um, present it in, in a different format for people that may need that?
So it's posted on our website specifically using an Adobe project, uh, Adobe software that allows different accessibility for the read, the, um, size. We did that, we did that discussion, I think, early on together to make sure that we had everything. So we are using a special, Martha uses a special software right now to actually post everything so that it is accessible. Because believe it, if you post it by itself as a PDF, it doesn't work, but if you post it with a Adobe Pro altogether as a certain program, it has all the accessibility features. So we did that for that purpose.
Anything else?
One of my concerns was that, when, when was that adopted?
Well, I thought we did that. I, I thought we talked about that.
I know it was within our tenure.
To make sure, yeah.
Like, because that was one of the concerns I had.
It was one thing I had, we had to change that.
It was February.
Oh.
It was during your tenure.
It is written on there.
It says it.
Yeah, it was during, during your tenure, we changed that so that, again, everything we posted, I think, member, Willa, you brought that up in one of your first meetings.
I think we were talking about the, the access to the website.
It's all of it. So our website has accessibility by itself, but the documents, right, that was a little bit of a challenge. That we were posting PDF, just PDFs without the version that you could actually have the accessibility. So we're doing that a little differently since that point. Martha works with our data manager to do that.
Regarding the executive session minutes, it says that the school committee chair and superintendent will review the.
Passed that right by. I'm surprised that got by you guys.
I think this might be one of the things I was referencing when I said that it contradicts something else because I want to say that in something else, it says that the vice chair and the superintendent would do that.
Oh, I don't know.
So I don't know. I mean, I'm fine with this one. I just want to make sure that that's what we're doing.
Yeah, we haven't had to declassify anything yet, but.
All right, um.
But yeah, I can, I'll double check that. I'll make a note to myself to make sure that this doesn't need any.
That brings us to BEDB, agenda format. MASC policy was updated in 22. And recommended MASC version with relevant Methuen specifics, which they added in for us.
Okay, so this is the policy that I was referring to because here it says the superintendent conferring with the vice chair of the school committee will arrange the order of the items on the meeting's agendas so that the committee, blah, blah, blah. And in the first bullet and the second bullet, instead of it being the chair.
So we had this conversation during this one, I remember, I remember this conversation because the concern was unlike other cities, our charter requires the mayor to be the chair.
Right.
The mayor is not going to go over and plan the school committee agenda, school committee meeting agenda with the superintendent.
So then that needs to be updated in the other policy. That says that's his role.
And which policy was that?
That was.
Did you have that noted, member?
BA, I believe.
No.
No.
Um, also for the agendas, can we make sure that the agenda is matching the policy? One, that we currently have and two, that we adopt? Because right now, our agenda doesn't match our current policy. That little snippet at the bottom.
BEDB? Are we on, what are we on right now?
We're on BEDB. Oh. It, it was, um. Maybe it was BBAA? Or BBA? Because school committee powers and duties is BBA and.
So I need to update BDB. That's good because I'm updating that anyway. I'm updating that for the secretary to the committee, secretary of the committee and clerk, so I'm updating that anyway. So good, we'll update.
There are, there are two more that go with it.
Same policy?
Mm-hmm. Not same policy, but, uh, like. So BDA is one of them. That would need to be updated. BDB would need to be updated.
I got BDB for the same thing, you mean?
For the same thing.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. BDA is, um. Yep. Um, I think, I think we, I think we said that that one was right, right? Because, yeah.
Oh, yeah, BDA is right, actually.
You explained that to me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. BDB I have, I'll update that one to align with BEDA. Think I got this. Ooh, it's going to be rough. I know, this is. I mean, Alicia said this is going to be, yeah, this is going to be, we, you know, and I think this is also the committee, we may not get through all of this, so there has to be a break of. I mean, it's the will of the committee when we're here till.
So we did.
You still have to vote at nine o'clock to go past.
We did change other policies from resident to citizen or.
Citizen to resident.
To citizen to resident, but.
Are we on BEDB?
Yeah, but in this one, I feel like the agenda will also provide time for when any resident who wishes, but we need to change that to community member because we said that community members can talk and not just residents.
Now, this one, the new policy, they can not have the effects.
Yep. And then also up here, it says any school committee member, staff member or resident may suggest items of business. So anybody can suggest something that we discuss on our agendas?
A suggestion doesn't necessarily mean it gets to the agenda, though.
Okay. And that will be at the discretion of the vice chair? Instead of the chair? And the mayor has to be the chair?
Charter. Till the charter changes, assuming they make that change in the charter.
I mean, I, the, the conversation that we had during this meeting was, uh, in previous, we haven't done it. Member Keegan and I haven't done it, but we can and we'll start if this all goes through. The, the mayor just isn't, doesn't have the scheduled structured time to do an agenda with, with me, right? So in previous, uh, there had been, uh, not this school committee and before your time, member Keegan, there were meetings that the vice chair was having monthly with the superintendent, the previous superintendent, and then when I started, that continued for about a year. And that was to review agendas, like the process was actually very structured and, again, I didn't do it as long as the previous superintendent, but it became very helpful to have, like, go over it with a focused attention to that. Um, so I think that was the conversation we had when we had this meeting is that attention just sometimes is not able, not because he can't do it, but just because of the structure of the schedule and he's focused on being in my position to the city council, making sure all the documents and everything are right for city council meetings. It's just the timing of it can be a struggle. That was sort of the conversation behind why, if I recall.
I just worry about changing all of our policies to read the vice chair and then let's say the charter gets changed where he doesn't have to be the chair. And now we have that ability and we'll have to go back and revisit all of our policies.
We can't proceed on the assumption that our charter is going to change and change only once.
Okay.
I know it hasn't changed in the three previous attempts, or two previous attempts.
How close are they? Does anybody know where the charter committee is to presenting?
They gave an update last night at the council meeting. Steve Sabre submitted a, a, a statement for it. I know they're meeting regularly, they're going through it.
They are meeting a lot. I mean, he is, he is going to, like, weekly meetings at this point.
I think that even, even hypothetically, let's say they even wrap it up by the end of the year, it still needs to get voted on.
Yeah.
Then it still needs to go to the state level, so I mean.
So there's still time, it's not like tomorrow, they're not.
It's not going to happen in our, in our tenure and, I mean, arguably, probably not even the next one. All right.
So we're keeping this and we're changing resident to community member?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. BEDD, rules of order. This is policy, policies matched, this is our existing policy, it was the same as MASC, so no action was taken, so that is unchanged. And then we get to BEDF.
That's the best one of the group, right there. No notes.
Which is voting method. Um, MASC policy was updated in 22. Our policy is from 1988. So, yeah, there, there were some policies in here that were older than me. So it was comical. Any discussion on voting method?
No.
All right.
We're on a roll.
BEDG, minutes, MASC only, they recommend adoption.
Didn't we just?
What was that there, superintendent?
Didn't we just do a minutes policy? Is this one of the policies you had, that Maxwell?
I do policies too, but I did write that down. I feel like we just had this discussion.
You guys did a minutes update.
Right.
On the policy right when you came in so that Martha wasn't doing 29 pages of transcribing, she was just doing minute summary.
Right.
I think that wasn't a. I think that wasn't a policy. I think we just said, listen, scale it back, because Martha was putting out.
We did?
Almost verbatim minutes at that point. No.
Okay.
Discussion B E D G. It says residence, it doesn't say residence of what? I mean. Yeah, I, I, I mean arguably, there's, there's.
So it says, it also.
I mean, that's actually, I don't know. Anybody can request it. I can't deny a request of a declassified or regular minutes if. Then that means all of our policies can apply to anyone that we just said residence to. Okay.
All right.
It also says in the beginning that the secretary of the school committee will be responsible. But I, I think I get tripped up on that, because is it the secretary of the school committee or the secretary?
So, so he's the secretary of the school committee?
Yep.
So he would be taking minutes and notes?
Right.
Which we don't do, we have.
We have a clerk who does it.
However, she's leaving in a month.
Don't worry.
I worry.
All right, don't worry.
As the guy who has to do the minutes, if, I, I worry.
But would that be, that's my question, would that be Dan or would that be?
No.
You being the secretary?
I'm the secretary to the committee, I don't take, I don't take.
Secretary to the committee, not of the committee.
Is this another job we can give to Ian? Sorry. He's sitting at home, he heard that, he's gonna, I'm gonna get an angry phone call in the morning.
So, we're gonna pull this and think about it?
I don't, I don't, I think that line that says therefore the secretary of the school committee will be responsible for reporting the minutes. Is, that's just not.
Necessary.
How we do it, yeah. Or the clerk to the committee, like, why are we, we have a clerk, we defined it in the.
I mean, yeah, we could say or designate, because it may not be always a clerk. I mean, you guys could end up with a, um. Mechanical minute taker next year with some app that they plug into these TVs. You know what I mean? Like, we don't, we don't know.
Okay.
So designate, I think fits better, because designate could be AI.
So am I putting clerk or designate, secretary to the committee or designate, clerk, secretary or designate?
I would just put or designate.
Say secretary, because during executive session, it's the secretary, right? So I would say secretary or the designate, and in general session, that designate happens to be the clerk.
But then would they be responsible for overseeing the clerk?
No, you're just designating it out.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the minutes come to us for approval anyway, so whether it's the clerk or the secretary, we have to approve the minutes afterwards.
But it would be great to see them go.
Yeah, I think that the rest of it is clear. Okay, I will add designate.
So the secretary of the committee would oversee? Would designate?
Or designate will be responsible.
But the secretary of the committee would be the one designating?
I'm not, I'm not overseeing it, I'm not managing, I'm not responsible for, I'm just saying, okay, you do it.
Okay.
I don't know about this one. I'm just, I don't know if I'm on board for this.
This one's an easy fix, maybe we could just ask tomorrow what the best. Alicia's got it, I mean, so many, every school committee has a, not every, but most have a clerk or a secretary that does the minutes and the roles, and it's not a member of the committee.
Who, so when you said, don't worry, who, who will be doing it?
I'm not quite sure yet.
Does Sue know that she's next on deck?
No, I'll be posting it as a separate stipend.
Oh. In that case, maybe I will do it. Um, all right. B E D H, Public Participation Guidelines for Public Comment. Uh, keep in mind, uh, this is, uh, this is similar to the M A S C one. This is, so this was our policy with some updated verbiage. We recently updated this. Not too long ago, because we removed the requirement for. Folks to give their address. But that was done after this was pulled and sent to M A S C, so that is not reflected.
So what are we popping in here?
I wanna say it was probably over the summer, we removed the requirement for people to state their address at the podium. So if we can compare that current policy and add that language in here. Are you un-umming? Are you withdrawing your um?
I worry about that, only because. We've removed that as, as something that we require. However, in a lot of our minutes, it does identify the addresses of the people speaking. Um, so I understand that maybe somebody doesn't want to speak it on live television or recording. But I think that they should still be required to write their address.
And they are, and I think that's how the language reads.
Okay. Yeah. I, I agree, I just worry.
Because it wasn't being announced, but it still had to be written on the sheet, it still has to be written on the letter, it just isn't read into the, it isn't announced in the room.
And then this is the part that needs to be updated on our current agendas, because it doesn't match.
Which part?
So the bottom part, um, where it says guidelines for public comment? It just doesn't. This does, there's one, two, three, and this has one, two, one through seven.
Wait, one more time?
So see here how it says guidelines for public comment? This is our current agenda. There's one, two, three guidelines. This has one through seven. So our agendas need to match what our policy says.
Our agenda?
Yes, so the agenda that we printed, this agenda, at the bottom, it says guidelines for public comment. And these are the guidelines for public comment.
Okay. When it's adopted in full, we'll make sure everything is, yeah?
I don't, I mean, I don't think, I don't even think that these ones here are current with the one that we adopted not too long ago, so.
They're not, because this was pulled prior to that one.
No, she's saying our agenda, I got it, I know what she's saying.
Isn't within. That's all, just something to point out.
All right. B E E, Special Procedures for Conducting Hearings. This is M A S C only, they recommend adoption. Discussion.
I mean. We do this for our budget public hearing, so. We're, it's great to memorialize it, I guess.
All right. Uh, this is B G. Our policies are similar, and for discussion.
The only thing that I would, um, point out is through the study and evaluation of reports. I don't understand. Um, I don't understand what that means. It's, it says the formulation and adoption of these written policies will constitute the basic method by which the school committee will exercise its leadership in providing the successful and efficient functioning of the school district through the study of and evaluation of reports. Concerning the execution of policies, the school committee will exercise its control over school operation.
So for example, our cell phone policy, we get reports back based on. Their evaluation, and so we look at the data and we decide whether or not our policy is effective or not.
Okay. I just didn't know what the study and evaluation was, so thank you.
Anything else on B G? All right. B G B, Policy Adoption. It's M A S C only and recommended adoption.
So I do have a note on that one, um, to come back to this once we're all done with the whole policy review.
Do we know why?
Um.
Dan.
I don't, I, I, I put a star next to that one in my.
So it was important at the time?
Yeah.
All right, I mean.
B G C? Is that what you just said or no?
B G B.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm way ahead of you.
Okay. Anything on B G B?
B G B, no, I don't have any special.
All right. B G C, Policy Review and Evaluation. Policies are similar, committee should discuss.
Yeah, so this is the one, so this one says that there's a consistent process for doing what we're doing to, like, now, from the school committee. So I think it was, I know, pull this out and kind of look at this at the end of this review process to see what the next steps would have to be to continue this process. Does that make sense?
Does.
Well, that, and it says that the committee shall evaluate how policies have been executed by school staff. I mean, we can't do that. It should rely on the school staff, students and community for providing evidence of the effect of the policies which it has adopted. Which we can't do.
Well, I think we do do that, because Dr. Quang is the school staff, maybe not so much with students and community.
Providing evidence.
I mean, it's already on the.
Pull and review.
My list to exclude when I make my motion.
Yes.
All right. Um, B G D, School Committee Review of Procedures. So this is a M S C only policy, M A S C only policy, and they recommend adoption.
It says here that the committee may review the procedures developed by the superintendent for the school district whenever it appears inconsistent with policy, but how do we have the procedures?
Student handbook.
We don't have the staff handbook. I think, I feel like it would be procedures across the district.
Oh yeah, I guess I'm looking at this as student only, but.
And then under Massachusetts law, the superintendent is required to publish rules and regulations pertaining to the conduct and teachers which have been adopted. The staff and student handbooks will be reviewed and approved annually by the school committee. I've never seen a staff handbook.
We don't really have a staff, we have the staff, like, expectations and sign-offs.
But we have a lot of those staff policies in our handbook.
Correct, and they, a lot of it is, everything we do with the staff is electronic, as far as sign-offs. But our staff, the policies that we have, harassment, that's all staff and student. So this begs.
But it has to be a staff handbook, too.
This begs the question of, does the handbook become a staff and student handbook and not necessarily just a parent-student school handbook?
I don't feel like the staff handbook should be merged with the student handbook, because there's different expectations for the staff that maybe students don't necessarily need to know about. Like, I don't care, as a parent, I don't care if you're wearing open-toed shoes, however, that's probably in our staff handbook saying you probably shouldn't wear open-toed shoes, right?
Yeah, no, so it's not, because.
But I'm just using that as an example. So I feel like they definitely should be separate.
This, like, when I just first looked at, like, this is all good for student handbooks and student discipline and everything else is right here for students. The staff one is just different.
I'd be curious to know what the attorneys say, and if they typically have the teacher stuff in the student handbook?
Yeah, or it's separated.
Or if it's separated, so like, I know, for example, I, I remember there being a dress code for both staff. Was it for staff and students?
Students?
I don't, I.
I remember us talking about a staff.
Yeah.
Dress code.
Some of it's contractual.
That's contractual, right?
Oh, maybe that's why I remembered.
Because there's some units that have a dress code more specific and outlined than others that don't. So I think, this one's a pull for me.
Pulled?
This one's a pull completely, and I, I gotta figure this one out.
I wish I'd kept the ones, a list of the ones we were keeping, it would have been shorter.
Yeah, the B, this is B is getting long of what we're pulling out, but that's okay.
Okay. File B G E, Policy Dissemination. M S C only, recommended adoption. Any discussion?
I think it's outdated, I will say, the middle paragraph.
I, I was gonna say.
We're, we're not gonna be putting these in print and having it on loan, like, these would be all completely up electronically and accessible to the world. Guess that would be up to the school committee to tell me to have binders on loan or something of that nature, but I don't.
Don't we have to?
Yeah, no.
I know it sounds silly, but don't we have to have something available to hand if someone had a question? Like, here's the binder, go at it.
I don't know.
For whatever reason, if someone couldn't access, yeah, or if someone couldn't access online stuff, now I'm getting picky, sorry.
Well, I think if someone needs anything.
The other part is that they'd have to come and review it, right? We have, I have a ton of binders that can only live in my office, that people can come and see, except they have to sit there, look at it. This would be the same according to this.
So do you want to pull it?
I don't know, I just, I think it's, it's the will of the committee.
I, I would support removing that paragraph.
I would go with pulling the whole thing. Why does that have to be a policy? Have you, in, in all of the years that you've been here, has anybody come to you and said?
No.
I just feel like it doesn't even need to be a written policy, it's.
I mean, I would just assume if I'm a parent and I want to know a policy, I'm gonna go to the superintendent and say, hey, can you show me that policy? I can't imagine someone saying, no, it's on our website.
And I'll say, here's the link, it's right here, and it's B D F. That I've done, and I've done that.
Maybe this is written pre-website, I don't know.
It says twenty-twenty-two, though. I'm curious why, I don't know, maybe, and it's not referencing any general law saying that we have to have it.
Right.
So that one's a little curious, but.
So is this going on the poll list?
When we were reviewing it.
Okay, B G F.
Wait, what am I doing with that one? Pull the whole thing? To review later or pull, because I have different symbols? Pull it to.
Yeah, I think we pull it.
Okay.
Pull to discard.
I mean, they don't reference a law, and they would if it was required.
Okay, B G F, Suspension of Policies. The, uh, this is M A S C only. So I, I would say otherwise, because it gives us the ability. To point to something, to say, we're going to overturn that policy for this particular reason and have it, like, be done by a two-thirds vote. I don't know, I can't off the top of my head think of a situation that we would do that, but. There's a procedure to do it if something goes sideways. Anything else? B H C, School Committee Communications. M A S C only, recommends adoption.
I mean, I think this is a great policy, however, I. Feel like maybe other people may not think this is a great policy, because this opens the door to allow staff and school committee to have open channels of communication.
Not really, though. It has to go through me.
Oh, beat through the superintendent.
Yeah, so whatever those requests, they just filter through me to you. And by, you know, you ask me, I get the information, I get it back to you, there's one channel. Yeah, no, I like this one, yeah, yeah.
Any discussion on B H C? All right, B H E, use of electronic messaging by school committee members. M A S C only, recommended adoption. This one does have a legal reference, just to point out, because this does fall under the open meaning law. B H E. I don't think so.
But can be, so if you're on, if you're messaging on your phone during the meeting, that, that message is viable.
No, no, I know, I know that it can be. But I don't think it needs to be in a. Anything else on B H E? All right, B I A B, school committee professional development. B I A B.
What about B I A?
Oh, mine are not.
She has them backwards, I mean, in the pa, in the packet, it's B I A B first and then B I A.
Oh yeah, see, mine, that's the way mine flipped, I didn't.
Flipped, yeah, mine just did the same thing. Whichever one.
Well, let's, let's. Because then it'll mess up my entire packet, let's do B I A B because that's the way it's in here. So that's school committee professional development. This was recently adopted, however, the M A S C model policy separates the subjects into B I A and B I B A, B I B A. So they're just discussing.
Oh, this is our, the thing that we referenced, yeah.
The quoted B B B F in materials provided.
So maybe we don't have to go back and do that because it's kind of here. Right?
Yeah. However, this one says that once a member completes training, the school committee members are not required to attend any more train, training.
Right.
But it does say our policy on the bottom.
Yeah, we must have given her this so she could put that second paragraph there, in addition to the required session.
I think we may have sent it to her. After.
Huh?
I think we sent her the. Clearly, clearly, we sent it to her after.
It was, must have been part of our discussion, so I'm, I'm scratched, so B B B A slash B B B B stays, I don't have to then bring B B B F back in. Because it's here.
Yeah, we have to go back to B B B A and B B B B, B D A, whatever.
Do we though? B B B, I have a note, B B B A, B B B B, and then I had a circle around B B B F because that was the one that wasn't noted, but we see here, it actually. Changed here to B I A B and it was coded in ours as B B B F. So do I remove the need?
Well, if that's the case, since it's there.
I have that specifically to review though, so what were the other things for B B B A and B B B B that were needed to review?
I think we leave it in for the first read and then if we have to, we can. Hold the second read.
So I am.
I also think it's like.
Ninety percent of the stuff is redundant. But that's by design, so. I don't disagree with you. All right, B I A. New school committee member orientation. This is. Previously coded, B B B C. And the source is M A S C.
And in this, it does say that. When there's a new member, you'll be given collective bargaining agreements, contracts, student and staff handbooks.
Yeah.
Staff handbooks are not online. And collective bargaining agreements, some of them are outdated, and the contracts are definitely not online. Nope, they're not.
Collective bargaining agreements are online, they're not updated, all of them are not. And unaffiliated contracts are not online.
So we have to understand the staff handbook.
Yeah, yep, which is the other one I had a note on, so.
Conundrum.
Yep.
Anything else on B I A? B I B A. School committee conferences, conventions, and workshops. This is an M A S C update. Replaces our previous B I D, which was school committee out of state meetings and expenses. Oh, no, I misspoke, it does not, this is in addition to.
This one does, just doesn't mention our workshops. I know it's redundant, but.
So no, I don't think that this means our workshops, I think this means like workshops we would go to attend.
For your own professional development.
M A S C or professional development or, like, you get that flyer we got last meeting where they're like, they're doing this one down the Cape, it has all these workshops at it.
Yeah, oh, and it actually does say our, it does say our meetings, I'm sorry. It says Almathuen school committee members will host and complete one additional workshop, so I'm sorry, that's my fault.
All right. Anything else for B I B A?
To me, it's a wishful policy because we don't have any money for it, so.
We don't have the money, so. Best of luck to you.
Right, exactly.
All right, B I D. Which is school committee member compensation and expense.
Do we not have this already? Is this just an M A S C one? Because I couldn't find this one.
This is an M A S C policy.
And it says that the school committee should serve without compensation unless otherwise eligible under city or town charter.
Which ours is governed by charter.
Yeah.
I have a question on this one, this says that no school committee. Member can be in a union. Oh, a union school, I thought it was a union that the school with the town participated in, sorry, I miss, I misread.
So. I don't remember discussing this one during our meeting. Because this is governed by charter. I can't see a scenario in which we would have expenses for reimbursement, which I know we should plan for because maybe someday we won't be poor. But I think this one needs to be updated before second read to reference back to the charter.
What am I doing?
Update B I D to reference back to the charter, so that first paragraph needs to be updated. The second and third paragraph refer to expenses, which. Wishful thinking, I think is what you called it, Member Donovan. I looked at that flyer last week about going down the Cape for their three-day conference and.
Maybe we can adopt the state program.
Yeah. Maybe we can get them to do it in Methuen next year. All right. File B J, school committee legislation program. Legislative program, M A S, M A S C only, recommended adoption. I think this is highly aspirational. I think we all do our best to do this on a regular basis.
Right.
Well, I, I think. I think we do, I mean.
So in another policy, it says that the chair will be our designated person to speak.
Yeah, I mean, the mayor spoke to. Congress a few times, the House and the Senate, en masse anyways.
I think that's in B B B A.
Designate him as the person?
I think he was already designated to Kristen's point. And back in the policies.
B B A or B B B B, yeah.
Yeah, ba, back in the one where it listed his roles, I think it was in there.
This is also a recommended adoption, we don't have to adopt this one.
But then, but then it seems weird because it says the committee will annually designate a person, and if we're saying that he is defined role is that person, then.
I don't remember discussing this one either.
Me neither, I know.
Oh, me neither. So maybe we pull this one.
I mean, I, we did, because I have a note that we got through the all of B, but.
Yeah, I, I would vote to.
Pull it.
Pull.
All I wrote was M A S C only on my. Folder.
No.
I mean, it, so to be fair, anything we're pulling can come back at some point.
But for right now, pull it completely.
Pull it, pull it completely.
We don't need to worry about this one.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, brings us to the close of, of section B. So let's, let's close out the section B vote real fast. I need a motion to amend.
Ready?
To exclude the following, B A. B D D. B D E.
Wait, 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 slow down. I didn't have B A.
Why don't you let her read it?
I didn't have B A to pull completely out.
Pull for discussion.
Oh, pull for discussion.
So is that stay in and we discuss?
So it'll stay in for the first read and.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm making a note on the difference between those, like, which ones can stay in that need a little tweaking or discussion and which ones we're pulling out completely because there's too much to do to just.
All right, do you want to read off your list?
I have to actually.
Exclude?
Exclude, I have B D D. B D E. B D F. B D F A. B D F A dash D.
D or E?
D or E?
There is no D.
I have E.
E, I'm sorry. Oh, hold on. And then B G C.
Didn't we also pull B G D to go with it?
B G D, I have a mark on too, yes, I apologize. And B G E, we're pulling completely.
And B J.
And B G F.
And B J, we're pulling completely.
B J, B G F?
Oh no, we, we kept that one.
No, B G F is in.
Okay, so.
Do you want me to read it one more time?
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
I need to, motion to amend to include or exclude the following. B D D. B D E. B D F. B D F A. B D F A dash E. B G C. B G D. B G E. And B J.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. All right, now. I need a new motion. To accept section B in form with the. Excluding. Do I need to listen to again?
Probably.
New motion, accepting section B in form excluding the following. B D D. B D E. B D F. B D F A. B D F A E. B G C. B G D. B G E. And B J.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Keegan, second by Member Maxwell, all in favor? Opposed? Guys have it.
Okay, wait, can you just pause for one moment?
Sure.
Because we're gonna have to take a vote to either go past nine and start C or not.
Fair warning, I'm a no vote on that one.
C and D is shorter than A and B. Like, C, C only has. Six, seven, eight. Eight. Nine policies and, and D only has. It looks like a lot more because there's red, but there's not, there's not a lot. But there is discussion, so I don't.
Okay.
Okay, we need a motion to extend past nine.
So moved.
So moved by Member Keegan, second by Member Donovan, discussion. I will discuss, I don't think we're gonna get through C in the next hour. We have not averaged a good pace yet, but I think we did good work, so for that reason, I will be a no vote.
If we don't go the hour, then we're gonna have to have another meeting.
Have another meeting anyways.
So, all right.
All right, all in favor?
Of, wait, whoa, whoa, we're doing a motion to extend past nine, that's on the table, okay, so I'm looking for votes now, do you want me to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
That's what we're voting, yes or no to that.
Sure.
Okay. So, Member Willeth. Going backwards. No. Member Shabilia?
No.
Maxwell? Member Keegan?
No.
Member Donovan?
It's unanimous, so now I would need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Keegan, second by Member Donovan, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Good night, Methuen. Listen, I could not.